Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, May 14th, 2018. We're going to call the meeting to order, and our first item on our agenda is reorganization of the board, which we had postponed at our meeting a couple of weeks ago to right after town meeting. So this is our first meeting after town meeting. We're going to start with reorganization of the board. And Mike Zulis had circulated some draft descriptions of officer positions that I should back up a minute and just say at our meetings prior to town meeting, we talked a little bit about the next chair. We also talked a little bit about having a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary, and I think we were all in agreement that we think we should have those three officer positions. So Mike took some time to put together a little description for us, and maybe Mike could speak to that, and then we'll have our election after we talk about the role and the duties.
Sure. Thanks, Katie. Just very briefly, what I did was take some of the duties and committee roles that we had with the school committee and kind of tailored them. So these documents are really just for discussion purposes, and I'm sure there'll be edits and but I thought it might help just getting the discussion rolling to set some of these things down so we all have an idea of what the roles are and what the process can be.
Okay. So I don't know if anyone has any comments they want to talk about tonight. I do have some comments on them, and others may have comments on them as well. We could do that now, or we could refer it to a future meeting, and vote these. Did the school committee vote these? Do you know, Mike, if these were standing?
Yeah, these were part of the policies for the policies and procedures for the school committee. And so, you know, if you, I think, I happen to think it'd be a good idea if we had agreement to have these in place so that we could call on them if there's any ever, any ever, any discussion or disagreement about what the roles are, so.
I'm wondering if we would want to do that at this meeting, or if we'd want to solidify that at the retreat. What would be people's preference?
We could take it up at the retreat and have some additional discussion at the time about it.
I'm fine with that.
Anyone else have a preference? Do you think it's better, Melinda, do you have anything tonight you want to talk about on them, or do you want to just defer the entire matter to the board retreat?
Well, I mean, I think we said that we were going to vote on roles, which I think we can do without solidifying exactly what each role will be doing. I don't, I don't have very many, I just have a couple of questions, and I think any discussion we have will flesh out something that's more particular to our needs, but I think these are a great start, and thank you, Mike.
Sounds good to me.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I read it, and everything looks to be in order. I have no questions. I'm happy to move forward on it tonight. I like Mike's suggestion about the secretary. And just, were you driving at, Mike, making one signature as opposed to five when we sign things as a board, or no?
No, I mean, I think there are times that call for the secretary's signature. I think there, with this board, there are times that call for the secretary's signature. So in that respect, it would almost be pro forma, you know, that would be the, that would be the individual that would sign for the board. And then the other role that Katie had mentioned before was, you know, kind of overseeing the minutes. So that's where those two things came from.
Right. I've been the clerk for other boards, and when there have been legal matters, the secretary, certain legal matters, the secretary is the appropriate signatory, so.
Yeah, and just for what it's worth, the two comments I had on the secretary position were that since we have Emily Martin in the Selectmen's office, who is the one who actually does take the minutes, I think we might just want to say oversees the creation of the minutes. And I, this was a little bit unusual, I know it's based on the school committee documents, I have not seen this before, that the secretary would be under the supervision of the chair. They're two different functions, so I was going to recommend taking that language out. But those are the only two items that I had on the secretary's role.
Yeah, the only thing we, since the chair may be signing things and the secretary may be signing things, maybe we'll put something in there, we put something in there at the direction of the board, because there could be a situation where the chair and the, and the secretary disagree on whether to sign something. So maybe we have something about at the direction of the board, or maybe that would be understood, so.
And usually, in my experience, which granted has been limited, it's legal counsel who will let you know who is the appropriate signatory for something, but.
My experience in the last five years is that what the secretary is really needed to sign is certificates relating to the bonding, just incumbency certificates and that sort of thing, so, or something very similar to that. But, yeah, and that actually brings up a good point, that obviously anything, I mean, whoever the chair is, the chair really can't speak for the board unless the board has actually formulated a position. So oftentimes, that comes up at the Warren Committee, where there's a, the chair of the selectmen is at a Warren Committee, meaning if someone asks what's the position, and there hasn't been a position voted on a budget article or something at that point, so at that point, the chair can only say, well, my personal opinion is one member is this, but the board hasn't voted a position on it yet. So that's a, that's a good point, Mike, that in all the cases, it really should be at the direction of the full board. All right, so it sounds like we're all comfortable with taking this up at the board retreat on June 2nd, which we still need to, we need to formalize the location for. So the next item is our election of new officers. And we discussed the role of the chair, we discussed the position of the next chair at our meeting on May, both of our meetings, on May 7th and May 8th, prior to town meeting. So following up on that discussion, I'm going to nominate Richard Wells to serve as the next chair of the Board of Selectmen.
God help you.
So, Richard, do you accept the nomination?
How will I do? I told you this already.
All right. So do we have, I guess technically we're supposed to ask if there are any other nominations, and hearing none, we consider the nominations closed, so do we have a second?
Second?
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm not voting.
Okay.
No, I'm only kidding. Thank you.
Can we make it unanimous?
Yes, unanimous, yes.
All right, so unanimous, so Richard and I are going to change chairs.
Katie's matured.
Congratulations.
And then we'll have a discussion about the vice chair and secretary.
Listen, you're the most important, I.
Yes, thank you.
Seems like I just got here, and now I'm sitting here. So I have to thank you all. I do have to, this is definitely not something that was ever on my bucket list, but I do have to say that in the past year, before we move forward, that I came in here in the most unusual of circumstances. Is that a good description? And I can't thank you enough, Katie. I mean, we came in here, David as well, I don't think anybody, and I said this to someone this morning, I think if everyone could, in this town, could be here for just, just a fleeting moment, just to have a glimpse through our eyes of what it's like to have to be a selectman in this town, and all the decisions you have to make, and all the things that people come to you for, I think that people would have a much different view of just how much people who are elected in this town do for them. And you do that in so many ways, and I, I thought to myself, a personal moment of chuckle between you and I, and you probably won't even remember this, but after the incident at the cemetery, we had the vigil up on the, on the gazebo. Emily remembers this, and you and I wound up holding hands in the circle. And you, you know what you said to me? Do you remember this?
I think I do. Why don't you go ahead?
You said to me, you turned to me and said, who would have ever thought you and I'd be standing here holding hands? But I, it has been a pleasure to be here with you, and even though I'm sitting in this chair tonight, you know that I appreciate your guidance, your hard work, and everything that you do, because you really do, it's amazing the amount of hours and time that you give to so many things in this town, and I personally am very grateful for that. Thank you, and I appreciate everything that we do together.
Well, thank you very much, Richard, and I'm looking forward to you, working with you, and I'd be happy to help in any way.
Till tomorrow. Okay, so let's move on to the vice chair. Do we have a nomination for vice chair? Or do you want, do you want to discuss it all, so people, this is going to be the first time I've had a vice chair? Do you want to talk a little bit, Michael, about what you described as the role of the vice chair?
Well, yeah, and it's very brief.
It's like the vice president.
Yeah, exactly. Basically, it's just to act in absence of the, of the chair, and to basically perform any other duties that the chair would see fit to delegate. And, you know, that might be something that we blow out and extend at our, at the retreat, but that's, that's, that's what I've seen before for the, for the duties.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Anyone want to make the nomination?
I'll make a nomination.
Sure, if you want to.
I'll make a nomination to make Mike Zulis the vice chair of the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Let's just ask him if he accepts it.
How do you accept?
So with.
You're all lost for words?
With humility and some trepidation, I will accept the nomination.
Denied. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. I've never seen Michael so quiet as he is over there tonight. So that brings us to the election of a secretary, and this is actually a role that I, I've only been here a year, so I never performed this role, but I learned very quickly from Katie, who's just stepped out as secretary, there was definitely a role to it, and I think it's one that's warranted, and that we continue to need on this board. Would you agree? So with that, I'll take, you want to make a nomination? Anyone want to make a nomination?
I nominate, Katie.
You want to make, Katie?
Oh, thank you, Tony. I appreciate the nomination. I, I've been the secretary a few times on the board, I think it should be one of the newer members. I've, I've had an opportunity over the last five years to be the chair a couple of times, and to be the secretary a couple of times, so I think it would be nice if we had one of the new members be the secretary. That said, I'm happy to help, and Emily and I have a couple of old sets of minutes that we need to go through, and then there's some executive session minutes from the past that we're going to need to review for release, and I'm happy to help with that, with the new, you know, either work with Emily on that, or help the new secretary with that in any way possible.
Okay.
Thank you for nominating me, Tony, I appreciate it, but I, I think it would be better to be Tony or Melinda.
My apologies, I should have, I knew that, so I should have said that, that Katie's declined. So I'll make a motion to nominate Melinda as Secretary of the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Will you accept?
Um, yes.
That was good. You're fitting, you see you're getting it here now, that's good. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, item three, review and approval of minutes, there's no minutes to count when we approve, so we can move right on. Confirm some future meeting dates, so two weeks, is, if, well, two weeks from today is Memorial Day, right?
Correct.
Do we want to go the Tuesday until Memorial Day? Is it the 20?
9th.
29th?
I don't want to go much longer than two weeks without having a meeting. Can we go Tuesday to 29?
I can do the 29th.
Okay, as well. Then we want to check, why don't we do this, why don't we tentatively say the 29th? And if you could just get back to Emily by tomorrow, and if not, we'll go for something else that week. Going back to our earlier discussion about, we really don't want to go any later than Wednesdays. Thursday and Friday are just so late in the week, the things that might have to get done to like, we don't want to go that late. And I think, I don't know if anyone noticed, John Flynn kind of laid, mentioned that a little bit the other night when he was here, so why don't we tentatively say the 29th, and then after that, we'll take the summer off? No, we can't do that.
We have the board retreat on June 2nd.
June 2nd. So I can do the 2nd, the only thing on the 2nd is, can we finish by, could we do 12 to 3, or is that too short? Go ahead.
If people still want to do the 16th, I think that's fine.
That's now no longer good for me. I thought we ruled it out.
Okay.
All right, hold on. So the 2nd, so how about if we did, what if we did one on the 2nd and then did a second one, like right away in September? You think that's too far apart? Maybe like in the, maybe do a longer one in September and do just a shorter one? What do you think? No?
As, you mean as a follow-up, Richard?
A second retreat. You know, there's always like, and if September comes, we're already like, we're going to go right into it, we'll be in budget season before you even know it.
Well, how long would we have on the 2nd?
I can go anytime. The latest I can go is like 2:30, 3 o'clock, but I go anytime early, and I go right up to then, so whatever, whatever's, did you see it at 7:00 in the morning?
No, I'm open that day.
You have, what do you have?
Yeah, I have, I have a.
You see the grim chin? Learning.
I have a commitment in the morning. I can probably get it covered, otherwise I could do 12:15, I could be here by 12:15 if I didn't get that commitment covered, but, but if, if the consensus is that morning is better, I can, I can, I can, I can get that covered. I'm about 90% sure.
I'm free, I'll, we're talking about June 2nd, correct?
June 2nd.
Okay, I'm free all day. I can indulge your personal preference, I think the morning would be better, start the day right.
All right, I'm going to split the, Melinda? You're already in the 2nd.
I'm good.
And I'll split the difference, if, we'll go for the morning, if you can't, maybe we could do like 11 to 3, or 10 to 3?
I'll, I'll.
You let me know.
I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out.
Okay. And then maybe we could look at September dates, and we could, on the, after the next meeting, talk about a September date, like a longer with lunch and everything, just like where we could really, because especially for the new members, it's going to be their first budget process, their first, and this was, as you know, this was an easy town meeting, because we only had contingent budgets. And I take it from the meeting we're going to have with schools and space needs, we're not having this meeting because they have extra space, correct?
Right.
So I expect that they're going to be looking, and with space, it's going to come an increase in their budget, or a potential increase. I don't want to jump the gun, but I think that, you know, an all-day event in September, we could really, do really do a lot, and make this one kind of like an orientation one, set some goals, deal with some of the short-term things, and then, what do you think?
No, I think that's fine. What time, what time do you think, what time do you think we would, we'd do it? What's the consensus in terms of?
I'm thinking early September, so.
No, no, I mean, for the one on June 2nd, are we thinking?
So I'm going to leave it to you.
To me?
I'm going to leave it to you. If we're going to do like 12 to 3, if not, if we can do longer, maybe we could do 9 to 1? Is that all right?
Yeah, 9 to 1, yeah, I think a 9 o'clock start date would be great, start time rather, and I like your suggestion about September, because I, speaking for myself, not so much Mike and Melinda, but after we have about, you know, 30, 60, 90 days to get our feet wet, and to really understand what our responsibilities are, I think it'll be, it'll be a much more meaningful meeting.
I said this in a conversation with you, Melinda, is that right now, and I couldn't envision, I mean, I was lucky that I was a department head for 10 years, and a town meeting before I was chief, I don't think I could envision walking in here for the first time, not even being a town member, that's, I mean, it's just an enormous undertaking, and I know, and I, I remember saying this to you when I ran, that when I came in here, that if I came in here, that I would listen, you definitely have to listen, because there's a lot to learn. It's just, it's so, it's so global, it comes at you from so many different angles for so many things, and it doesn't end. So I think, but as I said, following up on that, is that what is the unknown now, each meeting, each interactive becomes more than known, and you'll become way more comfortable, because if you said to me, "Do I want Moscow?" I was going to be sitting in this very chair, and I'd have said, no, Dave and Katie can have that, that's okay. So that's just a thought, I think I'll prolong one in September, like an all-day, like really give us, give a full day to it.
And we'll think 9 to 1 on Saturday, the 2nd?
Yeah, could we just figure out a location, maybe?
So I'm, I'm thinking tentatively it's going to be at Carri College, but I want to lock it in after the president gets through his graduation this weekend, and then go from there, but I believe that's where it's going to be. All right with you? Yeah. Is it okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay. I'll wait till I hear, but tentatively, we're going to go for 9 to 1. If you can't, then we'll adjust.
I'll figure it out.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to do another meeting besides the, that first main meeting in the retreat, or do you want to, you think that's enough for now?
Well, I think we should talk about trying to have a regular agenda for Tuesdays, and I know there were a couple, there was a conflict with the first and third, and the second and fourth, that a couple of members had. I don't know if we've resolved that or not, but.
So my issue is.
We should probably try to set something definite, so that.
I can send out like a survey and try and track what everybody is and isn't available.
Yes. Yeah, it helps with the department heads knowing what weeks of the month it expects, in case there's something they need to contact, the town administrator about to be on an agenda.
So right now, we're on, David Shager, who would have been on the first and third Monday?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth Monday. So I can do any Mondays, I do the second and fourth Tuesday, it's the first and third Tuesday that are tough on me, and I was actually thinking maybe split the difference and do the first, but I know what you mean, Mondays are, how many Monday holidays?
It's probably like five, I think, and they're usually the third Monday.
And just to add, I, I do have a second, on the second Tuesday of the month, I have a conflict.
Okay, so, and I'm fine on the second Tuesday. So what if we did this? Would anyone object if we stay on the, what are we on right now, the, which?
This is the second Monday.
So we're on the second and fourth Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Could everyone stay on the second and fourth Monday through the summer until September? And then if, so we're looking at Memorial Day, we're already, so we're already taking Memorial Day, the only other Monday holiday would be the 4th of July, and.
I think that's.
That's a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
Yes, it would be before it. And the only other thing is, if someone's going away this summer, if you know you're going to be away, if you could just email Emily and get it to her, so we can work around that.
Thank you.
Correct, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, that works for me for the summer. The master plan implementation committee generally meets on the Monday, one Monday a month, and that's been a bit of a conflict for me in the last year, but I can talk with the chair of that committee. If I stay on that committee, I can talk with them about trying to reschedule that, so that it fits in with our schedule.
And I'm fine with, you know, if we have to make a move, we have to, we did, we did it all year, I mean, what was it, last week, Wednesday? I mean, we've changed so many days, but we haven't gone to be on a Wednesday, which is good, you know, we haven't had the, is everyone all right with that? If we stay with what we're at now, just through the summer?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. We're moving on. Okay. Number five, does anyone here for citizens speak? Really? Okay, number six, record report with Chief King, and if you could join us, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Hi, buddy.
Four is yours.
All right, I'll just go over a couple of things, and feel free to ask me any questions about this or other stuff. Just a couple of things I made in my report. The first is department structure, I had mentioned in a previous letter to the board prior to the election, but it just outlined some reorganization we've done in the police department. I think this will help us implement some long-term programs and make some changes, you know, to deal with some of the ongoing issues in the community, community policing issues, traffic issues, revamp of the rules and regs. So basically, that's what the reorg was structured around. The second category there I listed was personnel. There's been a lot of minor, you know, kind of personnel changes. We have a civilian domestic violence advocate, she left for a new position in California. We just replaced her, she's replaced with a Milton resident, Julie Thermador. She lives in Milton, has two kids that go to Milton schools. That's a position that's funded through a grant with Dove, so that's no cost to the town. The second item is a similar thing. We're in the process of hiring the first mental health clinician who would work inside the police station. This also is a grant partnership kind of, that we've been engaged in for a long time leading up to this, so also would be no cost to the town. This particular one, we're splitting the person with Braintree Police, and I had worked with the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the Department of Mental Health and Social Mental Health, and myself and the chief of Braintree have a final interview tomorrow afternoon with the candidate, so that's in the very near future. You know, both those positions, great, you know, full-time positions, really treating kind of ongoing issues in the town, both at no cost to the town, and, you know, mental health, we're seeing that on a lot of calls, ranging from, you know, prisoners who, you know, might come in on a domestic or an assault, fighting with neighbor might have underlying mental health issues, because there's a lot of overlap with substance abuse issues. So I think that would be a great benefit. We have seen an uptick in kind of suicides and attempts and issues like that related to mental health. Third category, we're currently processing candidates to fill six patrol officer vacancies. You know, we'd waited throughout last summer for a state civil service list to be certified, it was certified in the fall, we weren't able to make an earlier-in-the-year academy, so we're pretty much almost through with background investigations on those candidates, so we expect those to be filled in the very near future. The fourth is a longtime records clerk, Jean Ennis, has retired. She left after several years in the department. Payroll clerk, Margaret Walsh, switched and took her position in the records department, which opened up her payroll position, which leads to number five, Mary Whitaker, also Milton resident, was hired for that payroll position. She came out of the treasurer's office in town hall. On the second page, on the partnerships, just an initiative worth mentioning, the Substance Abuse Coalition and the director, Laurie Stillman, has done a lot of work on this, and there's a lot of individuals involved, Milton Hospital, Fallon Ambulance, and various others, Manette Community Health, but we're basically putting together a team that will do follow-ups on any, you know, it's going to start primarily on overdose outreach for people who overdose, which will be identified through our, you know, response to calls, and we'll follow up, hopefully with the individual. If we're unsuccessful with the individual, we're going to try and target their family members and offer them resources, support, treatment, and that's a kind of a team effort by several groups. We're in the planning stage, we hope to implement it by September, we have a meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock at the police station with all the team members from the various groups. You know, the next section, crime and traffic trends, they've been pretty steady, there was no major, you know, increases or decreases really in any of those categories. A case of interest, you know, Chief Wells mentioned earlier, you know, the Holocaust memorial, you know, that case was a long time ago, and a just noteworthy case that, you know, you know, over a year later, that we were able to recover that property and identify the person and charge them, and, you know, that was a big case in the community, so I just wanted to make note of that. And then the final category I listed there was a Capitol radio project, we're in the middle of a three-year project, we wrapping up the first year of radio upgrades, and we all have two more years to go. That's a project funded through the Capitol Committee. That's all I put on my report, but, you know, I'm available for any questions.
Anyone have a feel? Go ahead, anyone?
I have one. The six patrol officer, eight positions, I'm glad that those will be, be able to be filled soon. Chief, do you think that will make us, help us make a dent in some of the traffic enforcement issues? Because that's, that's one of the big issues that, that members of this board tend to hear about, is especially in East Milton Square and the business districts, but really across town and neighborhoods. And I know you've been down some staff, so I just want to see what your thoughts might be and how that might help us with traffic.
Yeah, I think we'll significantly impact it. A couple of things is, you know, we're down six, and, you know, while we have 56 officers, only 41 of them are patrolmen, so when you're missing six of them, you're missing about 12, 13% of your department, and then if you add on top of that at any given time, you're probably missing about another 15% between somebody's on a vacation day, somebody's on a sick day, somebody's on a family leave, so all of a sudden, you're 30% down today. You know, restoring those six positions will get us back that we'll just have that, you know, ongoing usual 15% shortage. So what happens is you pull those people. So anybody assigned to, you know, a traffic or, you know, walk-in beat or something that's going to get pulled to fill sector cars, and that's the problem we're encountering now. So filling those positions will get us back that we won't have that shortage. And a big thing, you know, under that reorganization, I'm putting a couple of people that are going to be assigned Monday to Friday, which, you know, is not the norm. We negotiated with the union. Usually, everybody works a rotating basis. The majority of our traffic issue is on Monday to Friday. So we're going to be able to assign a couple of people who won't get pulled away for calls for service or to backfill sectors and will work Monday to Friday targeting those issues.
Chief, I'm sorry, can I just follow up on that? And just Chief, on the, one thing that the prior boards have been talking about in the last few years is increasing the bike patrols, especially in the business districts in the summer months. Is that something you're planning to do this year?
Yeah, so that'll be part of it. That reorg, I created an office or division called Community Services and like Traffic. That's where those officers are going to be assigned. So, you know, today, you know, I don't think the business district wards are full-time walk-in beat. I, you know, it's a small area with not a lot of calls for service. There's a lot of parking issues. I think we can enhance that through maybe some civilian parking enforcement. We could do through cadets and stuff. I've talked to Mike. We talked in a previous term, I think, with Chairman Hurley and Emery Fagan about that. We've made some kind of red tape behind the scenes to make that happen and we're on the verge of it. I have some stuff on my desk now. We've researched and have some stuff ready maybe to utilize some electronic systems that the person walking the square can more efficiently monitor parking enforcement and stuff like that. But if we utilize a civilian for that, I think we'll free up a police officer to engage maybe in some community policing activities, some walk-in, some bicycle. We're doing it now. The problem now is a couple of things. When you're short-staffed, that's going to be the first assignment that gets pulled. So that will solve a little bit with the six hires. We've hit a couple of complications. Like today, all day, I had a pedal bicycle assigned who was available. But somebody would have, that we do assign the pedal bike has had a medical issue, not preventing them from working, but preventing them from riding the bicycle. That's impacted that. But we're doing a couple kind of creative things so that, you know, if somebody's in East Milton and then we want them down the village, we actually have a thing set up for somebody's coming in to, it's a solid power battery pack that's like an assist on the bicycle that will help the bicycle officer. Because, you know, eight hours is a long time biking. So, you know, I don't want to say we'll speed them up like it's a, you know, a race bike, but it will take some of that pressure off that if they're in an area and it's, they've been riding all day and we want to send them to maybe an area further away, it'll make it easier for them, which will actually increase the patrols, I believe. So we are doing a couple of things specifically on that, but I think the staffing is the key. And I think the other key long-term is that reorg.
Thank you, Chief.
Oh, Chief, one follow-up question to Katie's question. I know you didn't put a timeframe on it, probably for a reason. But do you have a rough idea ideally and then worst-case scenario when you see these positions being filled?
The couple of variables, there's academies over the summer. You used to be able to book slots. You can't book slots now until you have the candidates, specific candidate information ready. We used to be able to call and say, you know, hold six slots and we could reserve it. Now they're saying we want to see John King, Tony Ferentz, and Mike Zulis, their full package. You know, we're late-stage as a background, so I'm kind of estimating here. But, you know, optimistically, they go into a summer academy. It takes about six months. I can't say yet who the final candidates are, but two of them would have police academies from other places and they would not need to go to that and could be immediately put on the street.
Why don't you elaborate on the savings, if you do, just for the other members of the board, so benefit to the town in hiring an academy-trained officer, just from a money point of view?
Yeah, it's huge benefit. The chief's right. So, you know, in academy, most of them are roughly six months. Some are a couple of weeks more, a couple of weeks less, depending on where you go. But you're talking six-month salary per person. Usually, they go through a three-month field training. I mean, after they come out, they ride with another officer for three months. So you're talking nine-month salary before that person does one shift by themselves. And, you know, when you multiply that by six candidates, I mean, the chief's right, it's a huge saving. It's probably 30, $35,000 per. You know, then there's costs for equipping them, equipping them with uniforms, you know, gun belts, et cetera. You know, those costs are going to be standard for somebody who does transfer here from another department. You'd still have those uniform costs, but they might be $3,000 to $5,000. So you're probably saving $30,000 plus per candidate if you get an academy-trained. So if we got one, I'd be grateful. We got two out of six, you know, home run. And the other savings, that's the hidden savings, not just you not paying them salary to go, they might do a half the time FTO. They might do three to four weeks, you know, even a third, I should say, FTO. They go on the street. And what you're not paying also then all that time is somebody else overtime time and a half to fill that position. So, you know, their costs, $30,000 plus, but the overtime varies. But you could spend that same 30 to 45 on overtime with somebody else doing it.
Chief, thanks for the, for the report. Two questions. One, in the five personnel matters that you pointed out, do you, is there any variance from the budget, either positive or negative, from those five personnel issues?
No, there isn't. The first two are neutral. They're, they're grant-funded. That's the domestic violence and the health clinic. The six patrol officers, you know, we had four vacancies. We gained two positions that had previously been cut back in the override. So I wouldn't really say they're two extra positions. They were two restored positions. So, you know, those costs are already in the budget and were factored in. The records clerk, the payroll clerk, all those changes are neutral. They fell in at the pay rates of the prior person, so no changes on that.
Okay, thanks, Chief. And then you noted that you, in the partnership with the Substance Abuse Coalition, that you're going to be having follow-up visits to individuals and family that you identify as at risk. Is there a standard, are you following standards or policies and procedures to identify those that are at risk?
You know, we've, we've done a lot of research and we're still doing that. And as I said, we have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00 PM discussing it. And, you know, what we've seen is a really great variety. Plymouth County, as a county, does this, not as an individual, the town of Plymouth. And the program they do is strictly opioid overdoses. Those are easy to identify, you know, call for service and stuff like that. That's probably the most common and where this gets tricky is who you partner with. So in other words, we've identified some partners who will do it with us, but they're funded only for certain things. So, you know, we, some of the ones we've identified and that come in the meeting tomorrow, we have Gondara in Brockton, we have Minette, which is Quincy primarily. They do have officers down at Two Grand Avenue, Milton. You know, opioids are easy to identify the person. And a lot of grants and funding exist to those programs today because of what's going on unfortunately across the nation. You know, we want to be a little more creative and a little broader and, you know, obviously, like the Board of Health here in town, you know, agrees with this. And I agree with this philosophy that it'd be nice to target others. So if we identified somebody, you know, at risk due to alcohol. You know, alcohol is still a major factor in incidents we see at the police station, whether it's impaired driving, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's, you know, kids drinking in the woods. It's pretty heavy presence in police incidents. Now, you know, that's a little trickier. It's easy to identify somebody who overdoses and my officers are smart and they, you know, use Narcan and, you know, I mean, it's, it's easy to identify. You know, to show up at somebody's door and say they have a drinking problem or their family member does, that's a little trickier. You know, because, you know, maybe somebody did drink last night, but it doesn't mean they're an alcoholic. So we're kind of working through that issue right now. So we're going to start just on the opioids and we're going to kind of, you know, explore it as we go. But we're very open, I'd say, to expand beyond that. But a key factor is going to be who partners with us on the health service end because some are willing to go to any, you know, substance, some are limited. So it's kind of tricky. I don't have a direct answer for you, but we're kind of in the middle of it, so to speak.
Thanks, Chief.
Anybody else?
I have a question as well. You mentioned an increase in suicides. And actually, someone mentioned that to me a couple of days ago. And I was just wondering if you have any idea or understanding of why that might be?
You know, it might be beyond my scope. I think a factor in the increase is, I think, a lot of mental health and behavioral health issues overlap with substance use. I think that's a factor. I think another factor is, and I believe this especially affecting the schools and the youth, social media has created new pressures, you know, sexting, cyberbullying. You know, I feel like when I was a kid, if somebody was picked on at school, you went home and it was forgotten about tomorrow. I think if you're a kid, it lingers with you all night, you know, people posting stuff. And we have these crazy stories. People create fake accounts or they post pictures with one person's face and somebody else's body. And I think there's a lot more pressure. I think, you know, substance use, you know, obviously, there's, you know, a spike in the town. There's a spike in the state. There's a spike pretty much across the country with substance use issues. I think a lot of times that overlaps. So I think there's different factors in some positive ways. I think people are more likely to call than they used to be years ago, which is going to inflate your numbers. But that's a positive spike because people are more likely to reach out for assistance. But we see a fair amount of family members reaching out and a lot of involves youth. But, you know, not just the police, the schools have done, you know, phenomenal stuff with this. They're putting in a lot of programs if a kid has a mental health issue or depression or suicidal tendencies. You know, not just treating them, but transitioning them back to school. The town launched Interface, that new program. I've already heard about families utilizing it. So, you know, I think it's a combination of factors. I don't think it's one particular thing that's leading that increase.
Thank you.
Everybody? I have a few. Everyone else? Anyone else?
I'm all set.
So just a couple of things. I just want to mention first, for those who don't know, just as a follow-up to that, is that as of July 1st, marijuana will be sold for recreational purposes in this state. And it's not, to me, it's not so much what they smoke, it's the edibles. The edibles are really going to impact the young kids because they look like Skittles and Twisters, but they're not. And even though legally they can't purchase, we all know that they get into the hands of young kids and it'd be, just from enforcement part of you, it'd be so hard to do it. But that's, that's only going to be one more element that that committee's going to have to deal with. On the academy slots, if you could just, well, Mike will know, because you'll be the appointing authority. If you could just make sure he knows so we know, because I know this has been a while on this. I'm going to hop on this a little bit. First, I want to say thank you because I know that Katie had really pushed us a lot as far as traffic, as you know, is a major issue. And for the new members of the board, they're going to find out fast and furious how many people come before us with traffic-related issues. And you, being on the traffic commission, you know that, how much that comes. But the square is continual bone of contention. It's probably one of the things I get the most. Michael and I just talked about it the other day. It's clear to us that particularly East Milton and the village, and Old Mills, the master plan information committee's almost done. Milton Village is going to become a very popular spot. And especially when Henry's comes down, you've got a mixed use. To me, I don't care whether it's, it's a bike officer, but I think at some point, you're going to have to think about giving it some permissory. And the follow-up that I want to say to you on this, just from, and as, you're the chief. I don't, you know, I don't come in the building, I don't, is go back and look at that five-year plan. Because I got pushed off a couple of years because of just budget and the non-contingent budgets. Look at your forecast out through 2020, 2020 and 2022. Because we are a community that is, we're seeing it's changing and expanding and the demands are. And just from a traffic perspective alone, the biggest eye-opener to me in my final year was on that Elliott Street project with 60,000 cars a day over that Mattapan Bridge. That, that tells you right there the volume of traffic that we get in this town. So that's something I think it's going to rear its head. So just keep that on your radar. I, I understand in part what you're doing with it now, but I think for us here, it's, it's not going to go away. It's, it's, it continues. It's one of the things I get the most. Last, next thing is on the radio. My one question to you is, I know you're upgrading the system and we're in the middle of going through a Comcast renewal. Are you riding our internet to do this?
We are, and it's funny, I asked this question at the department head meeting that Mike was at.
Sorry, that's what I'm trying to say.
No, that's right.
Chief sitting here, you know what the system is.
It's good everybody's thinking of it. Mike held the department head meeting and he brought in the town's Comcast representative just for these reasons.
Tony Salt, right.
Credit to Mike to in case there was issues. And I raised that question because I was concerned about the radio project. His advice was continue forward on the path we're on. He felt that we would not be losing any money or any investment we make into the infrastructure. He felt it was more of a switch-over. So basically, it was worth continuing forward and not putting it on hold. I actually had put the project on hold out of concern until I got an answer, but I felt comfortable after the department had meeting proceeding with it.
Who's doing CyberCom? CyberCom is one of your?
Yes.
And that's my only, because this, just a little bit history. My memory of it is that the fiber that we're using, that the internet came from, goes back to David Colton. Came from mitigation money of either Boston or National Grid project. And that was how we first started to use it. And if you remember, we put the cameras on it, the schools went on it, and suddenly we're putting everything on it. But I, my memory of it back then was it was a limited amount of fiber that was there. And now, in our current Comcast negotiations, this topic has risen again. And just, I want to make sure you're aware of it, that if you're going that way, that, just so CyberCom knows it and you don't set it all up and then trip and it fails right away. Because Verizon is getting away from the car. The car is going, the T-1 lines are, they're walking away from it. It's history.
Yes, CyberCom was looped in on this and I looped Rob onto this series of emails. And you understand this better than me. I'm not a radio guy and I know you have pretty good drafts.
I wasn't either, but I learned a lot about it pretty quick.
But my understanding is, you know, to the East Milton, like firehouse where we have a tower, that's based on fiber. But the new system we're putting up to the Blue Hills Tower is not based on fiber. It's on like radio waves.
Point-to-point, right, you're going to point-to-point, right? This is a smart thing to do. It's a, it's a, if you can afford it, go on microwave, point-to-point, dish-to-dish is just, B-prints going all the way. It's just the way to go. So that's just, I just, just want to make sure that was, on the, on the last one, which is, is one we've talked about in the past. As you know, I know Canine Fossey retired from my time as chief until your time, which we had a considerable expense there. And we received considerable DHS and money and that. That's a, that's a big asset for you. And as I've said to you, if, if money's an issue, please come to us. But I would appreciate if you could get that dog back up and running.
Yeah, and I appreciate you offering the money. The money's not an issue, we'll be fine. Most likely around June. It retired March 31st and, you know, I know the officer is very anxious and
I do as well.
Yeah, no, and I understand, you know, the, you know, the purpose and the value. But I just, you know, and I feel a lot of this, you know, I give my word on those other positions that, you know, we were completing that reorg and there's some people moving around. And I feel that the best thing to do is complete that reorg and, you know, then evaluate the dog. Also, that dog does a grant that's in June that, you know, we have a shot at. And I think would fund that dog at no cost to the taxpayer. So, you know, April, May, a two-month delay, but I think, you know, long-term, you know, it'll be done. But I just feel that two-month delay is kind of a strategic delay.
Okay. That's all. And as you know, that's, you're one of the few that has it. I mean, we're one of the few that has, has that type of capability, other than Boston and State Police, Cambridge. DHS, I mean, you know, funded the car, everything was after, after the Marathon bombing. So I just, I just want to get that on.
It's on the near horizon, you're my word.
You're the chief. I'm done.
You want it back?
No, this is enough.
Can I just add one thing?
Absolutely.
So thanks to Chief King and Lieutenant Alba. In coordination with the DPW, they've been placing speed radar monitors throughout town. From time to time, the chief or Lieutenant Alba will reach out to Public Works. Those devices collect data. That data is very informational and very useful. And I think you've seen some spot policing, traffic enforcement, based on that information. We've seen up to 1,500 cars on Governor's Road. I think 88% of the vehicles on Central Ave are speeding. This data is real and the chief is using it to try to mitigate some of the traffic enforcement issues in town. When, when you can't be everywhere, this information helps him better police with the resources he has. So I'd like to thank the chief for that. It's a continued effort, obviously. The problem's not going away, but being able to use that information and enforce shortly thereafter is, is very beneficial.
It is. And I just want to say, you know, credit team effort, though. Mike overlooked himself and Chase Berkeley, because Mike's really responsive to community groups in identifying where they should go. And Chase is phenomenal about getting his staff and Tom and Kanti and people to get, to move it from here to here and getting up in a timely manner. So I don't think the police deserve all that credit, but.
Take it. Good?
Yeah, and, and we can move them around. That's the good thing about it. They're portable, you know? But there's a new one out here on Thatcher Street that's been collecting some information and we've seen some thankful phone calls for that. But there's still parts of the community and if this board, you know, can find a strategic place where we can move one of them, we put the one back on Brook Road up by St. Mary's and that seems to be proving some dividends there, so.
I've said this in the past and I, you know, I don't think people really, Katie can, Michael and the chief can definitely understand is, bordering nine miles of the city of Boston, three districts, five bridges. It's great if you have to go in town. You know, you're not coming all the way from Hanover or Kingston. But the difficulty is, we have, and you see it in stats, we have a volume issue. And this town, and we talk about urban pressure, you, traffic's one of the things that urban pressure you get. I mean, you can tell the difference when you wake up in this town, no matter where you are. Reed'sdale Road's a classic example of it. You can tell if it's 5:00 AM or 8:00 AM. You can tell if it's Saturday or holiday or weekday. Just, you can tell because the volume, it just comes. And, and it's a difficult thing. You know, I, I, some residents remember coming to traffic commission, can we get a resident-only EZ Pass? You know, and a real ideal world, you could, but it's a tough thing. So I thank both of you for all the efforts you've given us because it's not something that is going to not be on your radar for a long time. So I thank you for that. All good?
Good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, Emily, I just did something wrong here. Just Xed out of my, I got it. Go to Slakman? That's a first. Right here, right? Moving right along. Okay, thanks, sorry. Sorry to have you all Xed out of my computer.
These things happen.
Xed right out of it. Okay. Number seven, we have a follow-up on items raised at the May 18th annual town meeting. A discussion on that. I open the floor to anyone. Go ahead.
I made a couple of notes. Others may have other comments, just some things that we need to follow up on. One was, we know that we're going to have a Stormwater article in the fall town meeting, we've been told. So as we're going through the process of setting the rates and we may want to think about our advisory committee. Mike has just stepped out of the room, but I know that that committee, there were four or five people on. The town administrator was one of them who served on that committee. Tom Hurley and Jay Fundling also served on it. There were a couple of other people.
Dick Burke, did Dick Burke?
Jerry Burke.
Must have been the DPW director also. So we may want to have that committee get back together over the summer months to start looking at the issue again.
So I'm going to ask Michael, that's a good point. So, I'm gonna ask Michael, that's a good point. So, someone made a comment, was it a town meeting that the law had changed or was that at one of our meetings? Someone made a comment that, that the federal law had changed.
This is on stormwater.
On stormwater, I have not seen or read of anything that changed, other than like, you know, the DEP commission or made a few, the secretary of environmental, made a, but I've seen no changes. But correct me on this if I'm wrong. If suddenly tomorrow we waived or we eliminated, voted to eliminate the stormwater fee, A, number one, the nonprofits would no longer be paying anything. And B, number two, that cost would have to be absorbed into our general DPW budget. So, there'd be no savings to the taxpayer because street sweeping and all these things that, that we do now, yard waste pickup, still have to continue.
Correct, on both. It's my understanding that, that $3.3 million override last year would have, most likely have been a $4 million override to cover the cost of stormwater, as it's absorbed into the operating budget.
In the article that you're referring to, Katie, this would be the article that's being generated from Fuller in that they feel that their drainage system?
They just got up and said that they're going to be submitting it for the October town meeting.
All right, I'm going back to what they had the
We just need to keep that on our radar as something that we may want to have, we were starting to say when you stepped down, like, we may want to have the advisory committee back in place to consider issues relating to that and the rate setting as we go through the summer and fall months.
Anything else?
A couple of other things that, at the, not related to stormwater, but just, we, we were also asked for revolving fund balances and revenue generated, and that's in the annual report. But we're gonna need to make sure going forward that we're providing that to town meeting members, whether it's through the warrant or through a handout at a town meeting. And there was a question too about debt capacity compared to other towns and rating agencies, so we should get, we should be prepared to answer that at a, at a future meeting.
So, that's a good one. Cause I listened to a great presentation the other day that the bond companies like debt because debt shows you're investing in your community. If you don't have any debt and you're not investing, then you're really not investing in your community. And I, I did ask the question, I asked Amy, I asked Amy at the town meeting if she knew, is there a ceiling? And then I asked an elected official from a close community nearby, is there a debt? And they're like, no, I've never heard of a debt limit. But that person also said to me the same thing, that the bond companies like you carrying debt because it shows you're investing in your community.
Are you talking about ratings agencies or bond?
Yeah, I mean, ratings, yeah, ratings agencies.
And let's remember how they make their money.
Right, I know, right, I know.
I, I just, I, I mean, we need them and, and they serve a very good function. And at the same time, all the way to 2008, things were, you know, looking rosier than they actually were.
In the, you mean in our country?
Yes.
Right.
And the world really, but, and banks will, will bend over backwards
Of course they will.
To, to, to tell you, well, you know, there, there are all sorts of creative things you can do. I, I just think that it's, it's good to have an eye on
You do.
What those best practices are. And at the same time, we have to look at the unique features of our town. So, I, I thought it was a, a great question and it's never going to be an easy one to answer and the answer will, will be a moving target, really.
I know that, when, back when Kevin Soji was the treasurer, he would always say that one of the reasons, one of the, one of the contributing factors of our bond rating being so high was the fact that residents were willing whenever it was needed. And it used to be like every five years and I think we went, went eight years without one?
Eight years.
You know, we, we could pass overrides when, when you had to do it versus, I was in Cohasset the other day and they're having an override and I was like, wow, Cohasset. I saw the place where I'd expect to see an override question and, but I, I agree with you, I agree with you both. I think, I don't know it is, and I think the more information we can have, especially just for us. I mean, imagine having a credit card and you don't know what the ceiling is on, I just can't imagine that. So, I agree with you, I think that's a good idea and I think we should, follow up to what you said though. Why do we put that in the annual, in the annual report, not in the warrant?
It's probably just a matter of historical practice that it's, the information's been there, but last, was it last year I think we had a handout at a town meeting? They had all the revolving fund balances on it, because someone had specifically asked that one night and the next, it was put together in the second or third night after we provided the information. But it sounds like the town meeting members are asking that that become more permanent and reported on in the, in the warrant every year.
Did you say, Michael, that it's on the website as well, that someone's saying, or did someone ask for that? I heard, I heard the town's website mentioned just fleetingly, but
So, the annual report was posted to the website, that's probably what they were referring to.
Okay. Anything else, anyone else, anything else?
Those are the things that I wrote down.
The revolving accounts did get brought up to me again today, that got brought up in a meeting I was in this morning. So, I do think that transparency, we all talk about it, and look, it is what it is, let's just show it, let's find out what it is and just tell. Cause if you don't, if you don't, then that only fuels people thinking, when times come that you do need money, other than, cause you know, they've got a bag of cash and I never I, I worked in a department around revolving accounts, other than like DARE or, you know, there really wasn't any revolving accounts in the police department. So, I wouldn't even understand what it'd be like to have a revolving account. So, I know the schools have several and I understand why, you know, and they've been very open on it, so I think that's a good point. Okay. Anybody else? Good? Good? Go ahead.
A few things.
Listen, go ahead. Fly that flag, I told you.
Well, well, I, I do wanna say one other thing about the debt levels, which, and, and this isn't for now. But, but to have that five-year maybe plus planning might mean that, like Arlington, we could at least schedule and, and, and say, we, we can get us on a schedule so that we're not having overrides that we have to chase after and maybe one every two years and then maybe one every five years or, so, so, and I think that debt is very much a, a part of that in managing your debt. Okay, so, that being said, I just wanted to make sure that, that we remember that civic groups are having trouble, we heard that, finding space. And Joe Sloan, I believe, brought up a, a good question, what's the benchmark in responding to resident requests to conduct studies before development? I, I think that that's, that's something for us to think about.
You talking about commercial development?
He just said development, so I think that's up to us, what we're, we're talking about. But, but I believe that it's not just commercial development, but when we're talking about maybe a PUD or something like that, there's So, let's see, I, I was just wondering in general about having a finer level of detail in, in warrants, but that, we don't need to discuss that obviously now and
In the warrant, in the town meeting warrant?
Yeah, just something, there are towns that have some more, some finer detail and I, I think it would be useful to deliberate the usefulness of that or, or not. And I'd, I'd be happy to, to get an example for us if we, if we wanted to do that. And so, in, in thinking about long-term capital needs, that was a great presentation that, that we received. I just had a couple of questions, how does it fit in with the master plan implementation committee's work? And who's prioritizing based on both the master plan and capital, the, the capital committee?
Well, in capital, every, you can tell me where I go wrong here, like, I'm giving it from a department head's perspective. Every board and every department submits their five-year, every year, there's a five-year, in the very human times where we've done a 10-year. And one of the things that I'm impressed with now that we didn't do years ago, even before I was chief, was that five-year might change and something that was, suddenly was gone. And now, the capital committee, because it's way more organized, there's money, it's far more focused and holds you to it. And not to say that, you know, the chief is an example, could have something that's on his capital needs list and a federal grant could come out and wipe that off. Let's take something on the radio, you, you just get lucky and get a, so those things can happen. But from a capital plan, I, I've never known the master plan implementation committee to submit capital items, you're on it, you?
No, the committee doesn't submit capital requests.
Right, and, and that's not what I, I was just wondering about the, the interplay because there, everything has money involved.
Right.
So, that was just my
So, every department head, every department, schools on, on the, on the town side and the school side, you know, we have jurisdiction on the town side, submits not just their operating budget, but a capital budget every year. But the capital budget is a five-year, am I right, Michael? You get a fi, you get a five-year.
Yep.
And, and a department is allowed to prioritize there. And the capital committee goes through that with a fine two, on both sides.
Right.
And prioritizes and, and I, to be honest with you, I give them a lot of credit, cause in the last five years, they've made, I mean, I remember years when there was, back, you remember when you were on the road, there was zero money going to capital. So, and you're gonna see it, because as we get into the budgets, we will see the capital requests and we'll see the, the operations requests. And that's pretty much how that happens.
That, that's how it all flows in, thank you.
Just let me speak to the master plan implementation committee. That committee, capital's not been a large discussion focus of the committee, but each member is responsible for contacting certain departments and following up with them on all of the things that are in the master plan that they have to do. So, we have one person who's talking with the parks department about all of the park-related issues that are in the, in the master plan. So, there's, I would have to look back at it, there's probably something, there, there must be some reference to capital in it, that one of the members of the committee has probably looked at and, and either talked with, possibly the town administrator or, or perhaps the capital committee directly about it. And some of that is ongoing, but a lot of it has been done. And what we're doing is keeping kind of a spreadsheet where we can track where things were at and then go revisit them six months, a year out and see where we've been making progress, where we still need to do some progress. And that's why at the beginning of the presentation for the committee, Cheryl Tugayis was able to get up and say, here are the things that are going on that either had been accomplished or are being worked on, that are in the master plan, just to show that for people who might think it's all about big projects, it's really not. There's a lot in that document that is already in process. So, now you've got my curious, Melinda, so I'm gonna look and see what we've got for capital on the spreadsheets for the committee.
Thank you.
Following up on your question too though, just, just if you follow just the work you've done and the proposals in the Milton, in this current project, you know, the Milton Village area, it's not on, I wouldn't find it unreasonable or unimaginable that a capital project could come out of it. You know, whether it's
Yes.
Something for parks, something that's gonna be the town's responsibility, I could see that happening. And, and as the master plan, if implementation committee pans out through the rest of the town, the other areas, I wouldn't find that unreasonable either. Now, my hope is, especially in like the business districts, just having written many grants for this town, my hope is that in some of these things that we'll be able to seek partnerships on some of, particularly in the village, towards getting some of them done. Because they are things that have that kind of benefit to them, some of the things that you've talked about there, so. But I, I, I wouldn't, even though there isn't, it isn't there now, your point makes a worthy, you know, it's a worthy topic. It may very well happen in the future.
And I, I have copies of my questions if people want them, is that?
You have another one, keep going.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm done, but, but I, I have copies just in case people want.
One of the things that I think is great is that comparing to other communities and looking, I mean, we always can look at other communities in the way they've, especially like in contracts and things of that nature and, you know, we always compare ourselves. Plagiarism works in elected, elected government as well, you know? So, I welcome anything that you wanna bring forward like that, that can maybe help us do something smarter versus harder.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, item nine, update pilot. Oh, I'm sorry, I, yeah, eight, boards and committees, I went right by that, cause it was my, the others are all in line and red. Okay, so we each have, I, I had asked Michael to send an email. We have quite a few boards and committees here, 17 to be exact. Nine existing and eight new proposed. Katie and I each sit on a couple right now. Is a, the only one that, and I've mentioned capital only, cause it was mentioned to me when I first got here, I've talked to both Amy and Michael. It's something that I think my background can help them with a lot here. Other than that, I sit on fair housing and solid waste. Katie sits on
The master plan implementation.
You know what's going on here? Do you sit on ANAC? No, do, what, no.
No, so ANAC is just, the airplane noise advisory committee is just appointed by us.
Okay.
We did at one time have selectmen on it and we changed that. At one point Dennis Gohin and then David Burns were on it and the chair of the board of health, Roxanne Musto had been on it. And then we reorganized it a couple, well, about three years ago to take the elected board members off and make it more of a straight advisory committee with residents of the town on it. But the airplane issue is, I'm glad you mentioned that, cause I was gonna bring that up under boards and committees. I mean, that's one that, I'm not on the ANAC, but I've been working on for the town and as the board's point person. I did reach out to our, not John Flynn, but one of his colleagues, Karis North, who's been working with the town. She's one of the attorneys at Murphy Hesse, who's, and she's been involved in this issue for a number of years with us, to ask her what her thoughts were now with a five-member board, how we may want to, maybe we want to revise how we handle that issue. And she thought that, she wanted to give it a little more thought. All of, she and other of her colleagues are in town meetings for a lot of towns in the last few weeks and continuing this week. So, I think she's probably gonna have some more time to get back to us on that question next week. But that may be something we want to consider, how we want to address the airplane issues as a board, whether we want to continue with the, the method we've been on or possibly form a board committee that would relate to airplane noise. But she wanted to give that a little more thought in terms of how it would best fit in with the town's strategies and objectives.
I don't know if, this is my own thought and you've, you and David as well put way more into this than I had to. But we have the CAC, where Cindy is the rep, we have ANAC, we have Fair Skies now as well.
But that one's a grassroots.
Right, Fair Skies. We really wanna start our own committee on this.
We may not, we may not, the, I mean, or we could, you know, maybe have two rather than one board member working on it. But that would raise the issue of a committee. So, that's what Karis wanted to give a little more thought to about what the best approach to that might be.
So, I asked everyone to rate, did, did people bring it with them or do you wanna email, or do you wanna do it? You brought it with you? One, two and three? Well, we'll just go around and we'll, and we'll just keep tracking, we do that, just keep, and then we'll So, as it is now, I sit in the photo housing trust, David's on capital. You sit on fair housing? I don't sit.
You do.
I sit on fair housing as well?
Yes.
There's a committee that I haven't, that has never even had a meeting, so I haven't even had to go. You sit on master
Regional one.
Okay, you sit on master plan implementation.
Yes.
David's at an MPEG, the chair sits on OPEB, David's at on pilot, I sit on solid waste, and David's at on Yulin Rink.
Yeah, and the interesting thing here is Mike is also a member of the pilot, but at the time he's not a board member, so, yeah.
I open it up for any discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I wanna get through these for, I, I, it's all right, can we get through the first nine, just getting those assigned and then go from there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause those are existings.
Absolutely.
Any, everyone, is everyone all right with that? I'm just
Sure, yeah, 100%, just lead, lead the way, chair, and tell us how you'd like to proceed.
So, if we get through the first nine, why don't I go to each member? And I'm gonna start with Katie, my thought is Katie's a senior member, she should have a pick of whatever she wants. So, that's just how I think, you may disagree with me, that's just, seniority has some privileges and I think this is one of them.
She only wanna talk about the first nine.
And then we can go on from there, but I, I think if we get
Sure.
The existings filled and then move on to the expansion, I think it's just easier.
Sure. So, currently I'm on the master plan implementation committee. I, the chair of that committee is Cheryl Tugayis, who is now the chair of the planning board. I talked with Cheryl, she is expecting that she's gonna be stepping down from the implementation committee and that a new member of the planning board would be replacing her, once the WARP project wraps up, which is in the next few weeks. So, they're gonna be making that change soon. So, she and I talked about it and the thinking was that it, for continuity purposes, it may make sense for me to stay on that, at least for a period of some months, maybe up to a year. If anyone else is very interested in serving on it, it is an interesting committee, I, I'd be happy to step down if someone else would like to. I think if we do that, we should, we should at least wait a few months before we make the change, until we finish what we're currently working on and then pick up some new projects. So, that's, out of those, that would be the one that I'm, that I think it makes sense for me to stay on.
Okay.
And I, I, since you, I thought we were gonna rate all of them, so I, I was interested in a couple of the, the new ones, but I know you wanna stay on the first nine, so I won't get to those yet.
I just think it's easy, but I can, cause I think there's just so much, I think it's just easier to get through the, the existings and then go from there. Tony?
Yes, sir. So, if I had my choice, I would rate my number one committee as capital.
All right.
I would rate my number two committee as pilot and my number three committee as Yulin Rink.
Melinda?
Affordable housing would be my first, solid waste would be second, and Milton Access would be my third.
Milton Access, you know something? Very, okay. Michael?
I'm, I'm happy to do any of them. I'm already on pilot. And so the, the members of the pilot committee since last spring have been myself, David Burns, who was the chair, Mike Dennehy, Jim Henderson, with the assessors, and Matt Keswick, who was the other citizen representative. So I'd be happy to continue that or I'd be happy to have Tony take it over or may, or perhaps both of us. I probably could add a little bit of value going forward, given what we've, given what we've had to that, but, but, but I'm really agnostic on it. In terms of the other ones, I guess I would, I would say Ulin as well. But again, I'm, I'm, I'm not wedded to it certainly. I could, I could see Ulin as well. And then what else hasn't been, what else hasn't been, I don't know if there's any that haven't otherwise been mentioned, so...
Comcast, Con- no, MPEG, oh.
MPEG, well, I think, I think Melinda said MPEG.
I would have said affordable housing, oh, yeah, fair housing, so...
But I'm also happy to do a lot of different things.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll mention MPEG as third, but, but again, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to do whatever makes sense.
Right, me too.
Okay. So, but we can have two members on a committee. Correct? That does not have...
It depends on the committee, I think. Some of these committees, I think there, there's probably just one, but, but if we are charging the committee, it seems to me, like, we charge the pilot committee, so we could change the membership of the pilot committee. But some of these committees, for example, if, if we're just a representative to the master plan implementation committee, we probably couldn't add two to that. So it really, it probably depends on the committee.
So in my thought, I just wanna address pilot first, given that David's no longer here, just for continuity of all the work that you've done, I think it just makes sense for you to stay on pilot at least right now.
However, um, no, no, however, I, I would, I would say, you know, I understand that, that David, and I don't think I'm talking out of school.
Not at all, no. I spoke to Mr. Burns today and he would, he would sign up as the resident, the second resident, so...
Really?
So David could stay on and then Tony could be the, the, the board representative on pilot. So, so that, that could work that way.
You okay with that, Tony?
Sure.
Okay. So if that's the case, the only two I would, if I, if I went on to capital, the only two I would... If Melinda goes on the affordable housing trust, I would stay on fair housing, capital. OPEB is chair. And then the question as well, now we have two members on solid waste, and I'd leave that to you.
I don't think we need two members on that.
Okay, so what else can I do then?
All right, now we'll go into, are we all right? Do you want anything else? Katie, you good with just in the first nine? I know where you wanna go on the net. I'm gonna go into the, I think we'll be able to cover everything.
Do we have them all covered? Can we just go through them? Because I think we just have to cover them. So affordable housing, yes?
Affordable housing trust would be Melinda.
Okay.
If I take the cap- capital committee would be me. Fair housing committee would be me. Master plan implementation committee will be you, and that may change in the middle of the year. And I, I think we're all right to address that, because when we get into the, the next eight, I have something unique I wanna suggest, just for, for the two of you specifically. I think it will help both of you. MPEG is Melinda. OPEB is the chair. Pilot is Tony. Solid waste advisory is Melinda. And Ulin Rink is, is Mike, because I think that would be the, oh, Mike or Tony, either one of you. You two can decide between yourselves.
Well, I've got, yeah, and I've got three. And Mike, do you only have one thing?
Yeah, I didn't have any, so until, until you'll, so I think it's, so you might wanna offload a little bit.
No, so Mike has, okay.
What are you interested in? You said Milton, the MPEG.
So then Mike has, Mike has, your second pick was Ulin Rink, so that would give you Ulin.
Okay, but then you only, he only has one. Is that a...
Yeah, so whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna give up.
Well, we were going four, though. I think he has more.
Right, you'll have more. Okay, why, why don't we say how it works out and then if you want, because you said you wanted the MPEG, which is fine with me.
The Comcast committee, and that's the short term.
Is it, is it, so I don't even have, so I'm thinking MPEG is Comcast. You wanna do Comcast as a...
Yeah, MPEG is, I think they're monthly board meetings. It's in the middle of the day and they, it's the, it's the MPEG board itself that meets. But Comcast, that's currently, that's not gonna be a long-term committee. That's a, for the short term.
All right, so I don't even have that on there. Okay.
That's the negotiating committee, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, I, actually, I would be interested in that.
Okay.
Okay.
So... All right, I'm gonna do this again, so we get it right. I wrote too much on my page. Affordable housing trust, Melinda. Capital committee, me. Fair housing committee, me. Master plan implementation committee, Katie. MPEG, sure you want this, Melinda? Yeah?
Um, I mean...
If not, I'll do it. I, I have no, because I'm only on two, so I have no problem.
Okay, well, then that, that's, that's fine, because you have a lot less to learn than I do.
Okay, that's me. OPEB is the chair. That only meets once a year. Pilot is Tony. Solid waste advisory committee is Melinda. Ulin Rink is Mike Zulus. And Comcast is Mike Zulus. Are you okay? You okay with that?
Sure.
Everyone all right? You sure?
Of course.
Willie Stansfield was Ulin Rink meetings. I'm only kidding. You have to have humor on this job.
Right.
Okay, you all right? All right, I'm gonna move into the next eight. So...
Can I make a suggestion?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, can I make, on, on these, I think we talked about, maybe talking about some of these committees, because we're gonna have to come up with charges and membership at the retreat and maybe...
I would act to that sentiment, Mike. I, Richard, I, I don't wanna hold you up, but I was unclear on the fact that we even decided that these in fact would all be...
So I'm fine with that. Well, I was gonna do that as we were going. I figured as each one, my first one was, is it merit, is it warranted? Do you think we need it? And then if so, who's interested in it?
So my caveat to that is only with respect to finance and policy.
Well, I figured as much, because you drew up the charge on that. I'm on board with that. I, I wanna go on record as saying, traffic mitigation committee, I don't believe that that's necessary, given the fact that we have a traffic commission in place already. And I think that if we would like to alter or change the, the mission of the traffic commission, we can do that. But I don't think we need a, a separate distinct committee when we already have the traffic commission in place. I just think it's redundant.
Sure, and, and we, and I'm happy to have that discussion. And, you know, if we wanna have it at a different meeting or at this meeting, because, because I think, I think we may have a little bit of a different view on that. But what I was just gonna say is I think for most of these committees, we need to figure out potential charges, potential committee membership, with, with the exception of finance and policy. I think I, I would be a strong advocate of saying we should have a finance committee, we should have a policy committee, and we probably need two members on each of those committees. So, so my view is, is if we wanna discuss having, we wanna have a, a more fulsome discussion of the other committees, we can do that now or later, but I would, I would, I would advocate for getting finance and policy in place sooner rather than later. That's my own view.
I could go with that. You guys?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think those are the two that we, that's been the most talk about, not only the candidates during the campaign, but also, Richard, you and David and I on the prior board, finance committee in particular, we talked about that a lot. So, and Mike has kindly drafted as a charge. I sent over some comments to Mike, just to, I think there's some areas where we just need to clarify, like, say, in the first line, revenue and expenditures. And I'd also like to see the finance committee, in addition to what, what Mike put in the first paragraph about the goals, also to kind of help with the whole process of getting the warrant articles ready to go to the warrant committee in January. And we just give an example on this. We first submitted, the, a prior board, maybe four or five years ago, submitted an article to have funding for the affordable housing trust. And what we were really intending was that that would be kind of a one-time article and that we'd seek a significant amount, like, we asked for about $500,000 of free cash. We're to, really, we didn't think we'd get that much, but we thought if we got $100,000 or $200,000, that would be fantastic. And the idea was kind of, as projects are coming through the planning board and getting permitted and there's payments into the trust, that, that will start building up. But we wanted to try to jumpstart it with a good amount of free cash. Now, we had significant free cash in those years, but there were other priorities, like the full-day kindergarten or the school advancement budget, and some of those took priority. So we didn't, we weren't able to get the money into the affordable housing trust that we wanted. So we submitted it a second year, but then after that, it just kind of found its way into the boil, I hate to use that word boilerplate for the town meeting articles, but found its way into the budget articles. And it really had never, like, the board had never had the discussion in the last couple of years about whether to submit that as an article or not. And I remember last year going to the warrant committee meeting and being surprised when all of a sudden they said, well, we're recommending $40,000 to the affordable housing trust. And this is when we had an override budget and a non-override budget, and they had it, I think they had it in both. And I didn't even know that that article had, but that was in the articles that they were working from, but we hadn't actually ever voted to submit it. So, you know, it's, it's good for the affordable housing trust that it's been funded for the last two years and we're finally getting it up to where there's a little bit of resources for them. But I think those are the sorts of conversations that we really need to be deciding going forward, should it be submitted every year? And so that's where I think the finance committee, in addition to the earlier part of working with the town administrator, the accountant and, and others on the budget, kind of helping that process and even some of the things we just talked about, where we make sure we've got revolving fund information available to town. I mean, that's where I think the finance committee could be helpful to, into the town administrator and the, and the staff that's helping to work on all of these things.
So my question to you is the senior member of the board, you wanna be on the finance committee?
I would be interested in being on the finance committee. I think it probably makes sense for me to, beyond having been on the warrant committee as well and having been on the board for five years now. So I'd, I'd be happy to serve on that one, Richard. But I would like to see, I, I do think that's one where it makes sense, as, as I think Mike just said, to have two members on that committee.
I do too, and I have this discussion with you a little bit, is that you may disagree with me, but I think for the two new members, this is where you would both really come to grasp the financial picture. Not just like to the previous questions you had about capital, but the day-to-day, the operational. This is, is Katie and Mike, Michael, you both know this, Michael from your time on the school committee. This was a, an ideal town meeting because it was just contingent budget. And I, you can tell me if I'm wrong, the two, either one of you, that I would foresee that it won't be very long where we're gonna be back to having a contingent and a non-contingent. And then department heads, you know, submitting one-time costs, like, and that was an exercise. Granted, it, it goes back to what, what Melinda said about not having to have overrides. And that did extend our life, but it, it was, and I quote Roy Walker, they were Band-Aids. They got us through it, but they were Band-Aids. And my thought today was that, and I'm just suggesting this, I'm just, having been on the inside, so you both should be on it, but three people can't because it's a quorum. I thought they should split the year and each do six months. Just, it, it will give you that much more of a grasp of what town meeting is gonna look like next year and what, what our finances are gonna look like going forward, because this was truly the ideal year. We, we just came off a significant override and it, it was not real. It wasn't. I mean, you think about the tough decisions that we've had to make in this town, as far as cutting things and keeping these going. That's more been the reality than, you know, especially looking at the school side. It's been the reality versus not reality. So that was just a thought, because my first thought was the three of you sit on, because you could just grasp so much having Katie there. But then that meets a quorum, and then I thought, and you don't have to agree with this, it's just a thought I had. If you each did six months on it, it would give you each at least a half a year to really get a good grasp on the finances. Just, I'm not saying you have to respond to it, I just, a thought that I had to be inclusive of both of you.
Well, I like the idea. I don't know, Katie, if you have anything to say about how you think that would work and if you...
Well, the only challenge, I think, with half the year, and, and you know, we should ask Mike to speak to this, because the school committee has a finance subcommittee and it probably would proceed somewhat along their lines. I think most of the work would get done, starting like, say, in August, right up through January, February timeframe. There'll be more to do as we, you know, as going into town meeting, but I think that's where a lot of the, a lot of the work would get done. So if you split the year, then I'm not sure whoever comes in in the second half of the year really would have the same...
All right, so I, I was just, I was just, I thought you...
...opportunity to kind of get up to speed. That, that's just my gut reaction, hearing it for the first time, so I don't know.
Right, right. I mean, I, I like the idea. I think it's a great idea. I just don't know. I, you, you would be dealing with completely different issues. And just thinking myself, I, I, I'll be facing an election.
Why? You're thinking out?
Yeah, so either, either I'm only gonna be here for a year or I'm facing an election, so let's put it that way. So...
Go ahead.
It, it just, on the, if it operates similar to the finance committee of the school committee, the intense time will be December, January, February budget time. So, and that's when you'll be meeting a lot. That's when the, the numbers will be coming in and that's when you'll really be working, that'll, that'll be the heavy lift, if it's, if it's the same as the school committee. So there'll be preparation and there'll be getting up to speed between now and then, but that's really when the... And, and so, 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 so it may be that to say, well, we're gonna have someone in place, but then we're gonna change it when it becomes the heavy lift, that may, that may be the best for the committee.
And I only thought of it more, I thought of it more as an educational, just for the two of you, and I've said this, both of you, that I couldn't imagine going to town meeting as a selectman and not ever even having, you know, it's just, it's overwhelming. And I said this to you when I, I said this earlier tonight. I didn't really talk much my first few months here and having, even having been a department head for ten years, so I just...
Well, I, I, I was studying financial textbooks before the election, you know, season even started, because I knew that I was gonna be facing that. So you're right, it is hard to come into that. But I guess I'm wondering, would there be an opportunity for the person who isn't on finance to do something else in order to really understand, for an opportunity that wouldn't violate the open meeting law and would be still transparent in some way, like going to warrant committee meetings? Or, you know, sitting in the selectman's office or, or, or something and just quietly observing or something? You know, I, I just feel like there, there probably are some, is some other way for the, the new member not on the finance committee.
And Katie touched on this. I've always found the warrant committee is a very learning experience. The only, and you can tell me where I go wrong here, the only issue would be if you do wind up speaking in a warrant committee meeting alone, you're speaking personally, not as the board. And, so I purposely, like, even the times I've gone, I wanted either suggestion of the chair or the, or when Katie was at. And, but it's definitely worth it. And it, it's also, the warrant committee is, is a group of citizens who, and they don't get a lot of appreciation. It's a very, as you know, Katie was chair, it's a very tough job, because you have to make decisions that affect people's lives and, and probably in a way that you never thought, you know, we ran for this position, you know? The department heads worked their way up through, town administrator applied for this position, was a... Getting here, so it's, I, you agree with me there as far as the learning aspect of it, it's, it's...
Yes. I, I think another thing that we could, we could do is, you know, I would imagine the town accountant would be more than willing to spend an hour sitting down, say, with a, you know, with, especially with new members of the board, if they wanna just sit down and kind of go through the budget spreadsheet and kind of as a, just as a learning experience to how the town puts the budget together. I'm sure that's something that, you know, Mike and Amy would be able to arrange and, and could do. And also, that once we have committees of the board, the committees really should be reporting back regularly, so the finance committee can give a report at the meetings as to where we're at, what are some of the issues we're seeing. And the town administrator would be part of that conversation. So I think there's a way that we could still bring the information to the full board to have a discussion here about it as well.
The other thing to note on this is I would suggest to both of you, all, actually the three of you, is that meet with the department heads. Meet with them, you know, meet the police chief 101, meet the fire chief. And if the fire chief's facing a major cap, talk to him. It'd be very, I think it'd be very insightful for you to hear and see his operation, Jase, the DP debit director, the lives, all, all the things that come under us. I think it, you'd gain a wealth of knowledge.
Oh, yeah, no, I think...
And you'd also, I think, come, we have some very skilled people who do a really good job here. And I think it, it'd just give you a whole different appreciation for them and what they do. Just, that's, having been on that side is my own thought there. So, so going to this, I, I'm gonna have Katie selecting finance, and I'm taking... So going to this, I, I'm going to have Katie selecting finance, and I'm taking, which one of the two of you would want to be on finance this year?
Probably both of us.
Well, I'm unclear, did you just defer, saying that you would not like to be on it?
No, I, I, I think we'd both like to be on it.
Want me to decide?
I was just trying to, I was just trying to...
Well, I'll come up with a creative solution.
Okay, so...
Hear me out.
Go ahead.
Seeing as this is Mike's baby, I will, if, and you had a great suggestion about incorporating us and getting us some exposure, some experience, but if Mike would like to be on this, if he's willing to give up Yulin, I'll take Yulin, and he could be on finance.
Oh, so, so Tony, you can, you can have Yulin. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to give you Yulin regardless of whether I'm on finance.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I'm not wedded to that.
I just don't want you to be overburdened. I don't want any of us to be overburdened with committees, frankly.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm just thinking, you know, down the road, it's, we have enough on our plate as selectmen, so if we're on like... One question I have, more of a practical matter, how many people do you envision being on this committee?
So, so if, if it's the, if it's, if it's the setup that we had on the school committee, it was two members, it was a, a committee, it would be a committee of the board
Okay.
with two members of this board.
Okay.
And, and, and the meetings would be with the town administrator and with the town accountant, just going through the budget. So, and then those two committee members would vote on things to bring to this board, vote on recommendations to this board, and then, as, as Katie pointed out, would report to this board on the issues and the recommendations at that committee. So would, if, if we follow the model of the school committee, it would be two members of this board, period.
Okay. I just want to add a caveat to that, to the town administrator, COO here. Would you want anybody else on it?
Possibly the chief appraiser, treasurer as well.
Okay.
We had a very fruitful exercise this year with the warrant committee, where we brought town accountant, chief appraiser, town treasurer, and with, with the school group as well, just for kind of a one-on-one type walk-through, and then we, it matured and we kind of started moving people off.
But if I could, you, I, I don't think you'd want them to be voting members of that committee. They were, you could, you could bring them in to advise that committee, but the voting members of that committee should just be the two members of this board, at least in my conception of it.
The one thing, just so everyone's clear, the one thing that might be a little different here than the school arrangement is, so when we wrote the legislation governing the town administrators, the town administrator's charged with preparing and presenting an operating budget and a capital budget to the board and to the warrant committee, so, you know, we have that dynamic. Now, the superintendent in the schools has a lot of, has a lot of authority on the day-to-day issues in the schools, so in that sense it's similar. I think the committee probably would be, we'd probably want to have, like, in terms of finance, have a general board discussion in the summer about, okay, what are our budget priorities? What are the things that we're hearing from people, whether it's public safety or some other shoe, that we think we need to address through the budget? Looking at the year, we, obviously, I don't think it would be this year, but in another year, it might be, which we had last year, a discussion early on in terms of an override or in and on override, should, should we, should we have an override budget prepared? That was last year. I'm not saying that would be necessarily the discussion for the summer, but in a future year, that might be a discussion for the whole board, early in the process. And then the Finance Committee meeting with the town accountant and the town administrator could, you know, kind of be working on that. A lot of this is going to be done by the town administrator and the accountant and others, but at least the committee will be, will be more involved in it than, say, we were, than the board was this year, and would be reporting back on a regular basis to the full board.
And the other, the other piece of that too, I, I'm, is, is to, to get into that, yes, the five-year, the financial plan. Right, okay. Yeah, but, but I'm, I mean, I, there, there's a lot to do, so I, I don't have to be on this. I'm, I'm interested if no one else wants to do it, but I'm, there's so much to do that, that I certainly don't have to be the one who sits on it.
Which one is this, you're referring to?
We're, we're talking about finance right now.
Okay. So if I'm correct, I just made a change, if you tell me if I went wrong here. Tony's going to take the Yulin committee, and Mike, Zulis, and Katie are going to sit on finance.
Well, I mean, I would certainly defer on finance if Melinda, and, you know, Melinda wants it. I, you know, I'm happy to do it, but, but I'm not, I'm certainly not wedded to it, and there are plenty of other things that, that I could do, so...
So I have a suggestion for you. So I wasn't thinking of you for finance at all, but I was thinking of you for policy, because coming from the school committee, that's really been something that I think you should take the lead on.
I, I would be happy to do that. I'd be happy to do that.
You all right with that, Melinda?
That's fine.
You okay?
Sure, sure.
All right, so finance is going to be Katie and Melinda?
In terms of the charge, can we, if we have comments, can we send, you know, kind of ask, Mike, you're going to take the drafting?
Sure, I can take the lead on that.
If we send you the comments, we can work them in, maybe we can vote it at the, or have another discussion at the retreat or at the next meeting?
Right.
Okay, great.
Okay, so now, I'm going to, do we want to address any of the others tonight, or you want to wait for, we've done a lot here. Do you want to wait till later day?
If, if we could charge a policy committee, I think that's important to get going on. I don't want to push us unnecessarily, but, but I think that's important to, to, to move on, because, you know, right now, in some respects, we don't know, we don't have rules governing what constitutes a majority vote.
I know.
So, so I think that's important to move on if we can.
And we don't have a second member yet, or is that, do we want to say that the, the, the other member of the policy committee is automatically the chair, or what do we, how do we want to?
I was, I was going to see, possibly nominate Tony if he's interested, only because Mike and Tony, I think, is, is two lawyers on the board, might be a good way to get this started, looking at policy, but Tony, I don't want to speak for you, I don't know if you're interested or not, or if you already have enough on your plate.
No, I, I appreciate the endorsement. I'm, I'm happy to help in any way that I can. I think it's a good suggestion. I was hoping to better identify exactly what we were going to do on this committee.
Policy?
Much the same way that Mike outlined, the finance, you know, is it, but, but I, I think we'll give it some more shape. We'll give it some oomph and, and go from there.
Yeah, I, I think initially, it's really just to set up policies and procedures that govern this board, because there aren't any in place. And then beyond that, you know, we are the chief policymaking board of the, of the town, and so we probably should have a policy committee that kind of digs into what policies this board wants to adopt. So that, that's really the thought, but, but I can, I can flesh that out.
No, I'll help you with it.
Yeah, okay, great.
I'll help you with it, no.
Great, excellent.
I'd love to be a part of that, thank you.
I think that's a good idea, and Michael, you've, you know, you've done the, this has been your vision right from the get-go, but I do want, because recently, was it the three of us who were at a meeting, and someone asked a question about Robert's rules? Was it the warrant committee?
I think Mike asked that at the last...
Did you ask that, did you ask that here?
At the, at the, when John was here, John Flynn was here.
Okay. We were also at the warrant committee meeting, and a new member of the warrant committee asked the question, the Robert's rules. They, they had been, obviously, on other committees, so I think, I don't think we need a Bible full of policies, but I do agree. I think policies, especially in the day-to-day charges, just like these things here, only makes sense. It codifies it, I think it just, it only makes sense.
And there's, there's a hot topic policy that we really want to address, or at least the prior board wanted to address on fairly quick order, which is the social media policy regarding boards and committees. We have one that we just, the prior board just put in place for employees, but there are some unique issues for boards and committees. I mean, you know, Melinda just referenced an election. Elected boards all have members who have to go out and talk to voters to get elected, and all of us have had campaign Facebook pages that, so those are the sorts of issues that we need to think about, because those campaign Facebook pages talk about town issues. So we want the social media policy for boards and committees to be, it's not going to just mirror perfectly the employee policy, because there are different factors to consider, so that's, that's one that we would like.
To look at quickly, yeah.
And the town administrator and others have wanted to try to get in place, and the town council has suggested that we get something in place on that. So that would be a priority, I think, for the policy committee.
Especially just the role that social media plays in day-to-day life now, in so many ways, it just, I think it only makes sense. Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just going to make, make a suggestion for thought. Tony, if you're going to take Yulin, then maybe we think about having two members of this committee on pilot, and then we can kind of share the, share the, the effort there, just a thought. Just because I've done it before, I've been on it before, so, so that's a thought. We might want to do that. If you take Yulin, then maybe the both of us can be on pilot, to make, you know, we can think about that.
Sure, yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay, great.
Are we allowed to do that?
We can have two. I mean, that's a committee charged by this board, so we can decide, really, it's membership.
So do we just change pilot to, to?
We, we'd have to change the, the membership, so we'll, I think we'll have to just think about that.
Sorry, I know it's going to stay to...
Tony's on it for now, Tony's on it for now, and then we'll think about it.
So let's not let that go to run, because pilot is going to continue to rear its head.
Yes.
Okay, so...
We can kill, we can kill two birds with one stone at the retreat, chief.
Okay.
Yeah, Curry, we'll just bring, yeah.
Yeah, we might. He's pretty receptive. Okay, so is there another committee? So I have, I have the housing committee, development committee, school, school space needs committee, which I think is chair I'm going to take on, because Kevin, Kevin Donahue's taken on the school side, so. I think it's going to involve all of us, I think it's going to involve some joint meetings between this board and their body. I'll definitely take it to get the prelim and, and to come back to us and see how we're going to move forward. I, I had thought, you know, it's, it's evident, especially talking to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, that enrollment is growing, and I think I said this to you, Michael, is, is this just a spurt? Or is this something that's going to continue on? So I'll gladly take both of those, school space committee and space needs, if you want, as chair for this year, I'll do both of them, unless someone else has a real interest in them. But you've got a lot already going once. No, and, and we could defer it, you know, we can come back to it, but, but I, I will say, I will take both of those if you want those, I just...
What are the school space committee being employed with the school?
Yeah, so that's what I said, I think the school, I'll take the lead on it, but I think, I think eventually it's going to involve a joint meeting between both boards. That's what I think, and so, and I think maybe we could expand on that, depending on what comes out of that meeting. I really want to hear what they say.
I think they would want someone on the committee too, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
I think they'd want maybe the superintendent or others to be part of this effort.
Yeah, so I'm really interested to hear what they have to say first. That's, that's what I, I want to hear their, their point on this, and then go from there. The traffic, going back to what Tony said about the traffic mitigation, the one thing I've thought about this, and I truly have, and I've said this, having been chair of the Traffic Commission, it's a tough, and the Traffic Commission is, is legislated through general by, you know, general bylaws, referring back to what you said, Tony, about changing, we just made a change, we, we made a, you know, statutory change on the chair from the police chief to, and that was a project in itself, just to get that to a town meeting. So the one thing, though, that I thought to add to this, and I've said this over to Michael, and this really comes out of our East Milton discussions, and a town meeting member gave me a great article that was written in two thousand and two by a committee that preempted the master planning implementation. It was a committee that looked at traffic and parking in East Milton. And as much as we've had traffic issues come here on the, in the business districts, and especially East Milton, parking is an issue. And you saw, look at the angst, you know, through just all, you know, everyone thought that they were going to gain twenty-something spaces on the deck, and in the end, that didn't happen, and now we're looking at it in other ways, and just from, full disclosure on this, I just gave Michael last week a copy of my last year's chair, we looked at a piece of property over in East Milton that the town owns behind the Mac. Just as a relief for that neighborhood, that the town planted, not the town, the town engineer drew up, didn't it?
Off of Hollis Street.
Off of Hollis Street, and you could put twenty-two spaces there. And that's twenty, one of the biggest problems for parking on the Bryant Ave, Adams, Sheldon Building, H.O. Road, are the postal workers. Because even though we all have letter carriers, they go there first in the morning, they spend a significant part of their day there, so they have to park, then they take their, their mail, and they, they go off to their roots. And back then, I thought, you know, there's so many different ways, twenty-two spaces would be an immense thing, not just to take the pressure off Hollis and Andrews and Babcock, but the square as a whole, that aspect of the square, it opens up those spaces that Mr. Cronin had talked about along Bryant, that are always being pushed for, which is why they were serviced on in the first place. It warrants us taking a look at it. It's only about, as a capital project, it would only be about a seventy thousand dollar project to do it. The, that area, the back of the Mac, really isn't even grassed, it's almost like gravel and, but I'm, I'm talking a lot here, but I think parking is something we need to continue to look at. Even if we're just helping the Traffic Commission with this, I think it's something we have to address, I really do. I mean, we saw, just, you'll, you'll see when Howard Stein Hudson comes in, I mean, they count every single space, we're just trying to find ones and twos that, that are just that critical over there. And depending on what happens in Milton Village and Central Avenue, look at all the effort that you went through on the Henrys project, just trying to assure there's adequate parking for that building and that project, just, and it's still only close, so I think it's something that... So I, I don't think we have to do this tonight, but I, I would like to amend that, to say that if we do something as far as mitigation, I think that perhaps we could start to look at possibilities of parking. And, and there could be just one member, and I'll even do it myself, I, I have no problem doing that, but I think it warrants a little bit of looking at. And then, so that goes back to the housing committee and the youth task force, what I call the youth task force, but I'll go back to why that, we had a meeting today on this, this morning with one of the members. I think, Melinda, you were the one who proposed a housing committee. What was your vision, different from the Affordable Housing Trust, which is a statutory committee?
Right.
Or, or which is a committee created by statute, what would you see?
So a number of things, but housing in general, because there's a lack of housing across almost every price point. But, but really looking towards the, the sort of mid-range and the, the types of housing that we really need, and seeing how we can get that done, but also to protect the affordable housing that we have, so it doesn't come off the rolls, and also to, to look at issues around forty B, and what we can do to sort of mitigate the effects of that through both producing housing and, and maybe some other ways. So it's a, it's a, it's a big umbrella, and I, I think that it would need to have something of a plan attached to it. But, but to look at the housing production plan, we really haven't been working on it very much.
It's true, though, that part's true. So I would say this to you, and I want to call it homework, and, and I only say this because being on the Affordable Housing Trust here for this board has been, we may, once a month, it, it can be very frustrating, going to the point that you have, and, and to the points that Katie made, as far as just the lack of funds that they've had. But it's been a true eye-opener for me, because one of the things that we've seen here historically in the past few years here is that when someone comes in, especially with a, an affordable project, it's massive. And one of the meetings, I was with Mass Housing Partnership, I saw like what Needham was doing, and that's, it was, it was like two units and three units, just small, chipping away at it. And unfortunately here, some of the projects that have been proposed as affordables, not all of them, but some of them, have been just so massive and out of scale, and I go to Kathleen, the Castle in the Swamp, that was still waiting decision, which is the Meg Lane project off of Randolph Avenue, which is, granted, it'll help you when you're, but are you really helping the quality of your community with that type of project?
Mm-hmm.
But I, my suggestion to you is to attend an Affordable Housing Trust meeting. Talk to, you know, talk to Lauren, Lauren sets them up from the planning department, and I'd meet with her as well, sit with her, and, and that might help create some more vision for how you want to do this, because to give it, you know, a better charge. But, and the other thing too is, I think that when you, because now that you're going to sit in the Affordable Housing Trust, you may be able to alleviate a lot of your concerns and address them right then and there, because they do, they, they're a great committee, they do great work.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you will bring a lot to that as well, I could, just from the first time we talked, just the fact that you have an interest in it is worth, it cements the value of it, so that's just my thought on that, before we just create something and...
Well, I, I, I went to a conference with Bill Clark.
You told me that.
And, yeah, and Cheryl Taggias, and they're also interested in working on housing as, you know, a, a larger vision of housing and what housing could be in Milton, and not just affordable housing, but, you know, looking at it globally. So, so I certainly will start going to the meetings and, and meeting with, maybe getting a group together just to talk about what, what this could be.
Just wanna follow up to that, even because I'm gonna be leaving, would it be all right for me to go to the next meeting? Just to introduce Melinda and then, that'd still be just two of us. Because you're gonna, that's one point.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna come with you.
Thank you.
All right?
Okay, great.
Just on, just to follow up on the points, you know, there's a lot of different boards and committees that are working on some of these issues that we're talking about forming new committees for, like, like the Planning Board, like the Master Plan Implementation Committee or, or the Traffic Commission, which was the Traffic Mitigation Committee and, and some others, Youth Task, Youth Task Force, we've, we had talked about that, I know the Town Administration's been giving that some thought, but that kind of involves the library, might involve the Park Department, so there's a, there's a lot of other elected and appointed boards that I think we may wanna possibly let some of them know what committees we're thinking of putting together, see whether there might be some interest in some of them, especially the schools, for the School Space Committee, to serve on those committees and also see what they might be thinking or what they might be working on. Like, we, we obviously don't wanna have a lot of overlap with competing committees working on the same topics. We want it all to be complementary and to kind of let, let people always know what we're thinking about and see what their thoughts may be.
Right, and I, I guess that was part of what I wanted to clarify was our committees, I, it seemed to me, the, these one, the proposed new ones on, on the bottom of the sheet, were committees for our board and we, for issues that we felt were timely, particularly intractable, far-reaching. And my question was, well, okay, so housing, how would it fit in with fair housing, affordable housing and master plan? So that, that, that was a discussion that I, I was curious about, and Space Needs and Schools, you know, you have got the Capital Committee. So I guess I was wondering about the overall vision of us having committees and what they were really for, so.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, so I can tell you what my thought was on, on these committees and the ones that I had proposed. My thought is not to have these be committees of the Board of Selectmen working in a vacuum or in a silo, but the, but these committees would bring together all of the relevant stakeholders, whether it be the Planning Board or the School Committee or the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So we would, we would jointly charge these committees, so if it were the School Space, it would be a jointly charged committee that would bring together the expertise of someone from this board so that, so that really the left hand in town knows what the right hand is doing. So the idea that I have is that these wouldn't be like the Finance Committee or the Policy Committee, be committees of this board, but these would be advisory committees or policy committees, bringing together all of the different boards in town so that, so that you bring together all those ideas. And I can tell you, my thought on this is, is really driven by my experience in the Town School Consolidation Committee, which was a joint committee charged by the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, and it brought together the Town Administrator, the Town Accountant and the Vice President of Business Operations for the Schools and the Treasurer. And when you get, when you get the stakeholders in the room, and my, and my, that's my experience, you really generate the ideas and how we're gonna attack, attack the problems. So that's, those were my thoughts on what those committees would entail.
And that's, that's how I had thought of housing.
And I think, first off, for all of this, or much of this, particularly these, we're in our infancy, and I think we'll learn as we go and build as we go. We're in a brand-new world here with five members and the idea is, you know, to work smarter, no doubt, and to try and accomplish a lot. A year is go, you, you said earlier, you're gonna run election, a year goes by fast, doesn't it? When you're only meeting twice, it just, it's gone and it's gonna be the October town meeting before we know it, and then it'll be the general town meeting right out, it's, it's, our life is but merely two blinks of the human eye. Blink once and it's beginning, blink twice and it's over. And, and so, I, I, my own opinion is I, I think, I welcome anything, and I agree with Michael, that, you know, partnerships are what we need, you build partnerships, you build bridges, people will walk across it. And I think that part of the reason that the, we're asked, the Town Government Committee came up with this was, I think that's what they wanted this board to do, Ian, the strong town administrator.
So it sounds like the Finance Committee, the Policy Committee, the only two we're currently contemplating that would be actually committees of the board.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's good that we're all on that stage.
And I just wanna go to, to the Youth Task Force, and this is kind of a follow-up to what you said, Mike, and I just wanna touch on my own view of this because I've, this has been on my radar for so long now that I really wanna, I don't see this as a long-term thing for us, I see us as being facilitators and enablers, as being the chief executive board to bring all the parties, there are so many entities out there, whether it's the library, the MAC, the schools, organized sports, so many entities, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, soccer, just, it's, it's unbelievable as far as what there is structured, but yet that gap, particularly in the middle school adolescents, that non-structured time still exists, and I truly believe in my heart, having dealt with so many of them independently, that if we can bring, because we have two issues here, we have the immediate and we have the long-term. And anyone who thinks that we could just build a teen center tomorrow, it's just, there are capital projects already on the horizon that are significant, especially the fighter station and the DPW, so to build that, you know, that intergenerational center Randolph is great, but they didn't just do that overnight, it was thirteen million dollars. I think in the short term, we need, I would like to see this board, at least whoever this, if, I'll do it, but if no one else wants to, bring all of our partners together, bring them all and get them focused, who could contribute, what can you contribute? What space do you have, I mean, we've seen requests, people focusing on this building. There are so many other entities beyond this building, religious institutions, Cunningham, the Yulin Rink, which, which we currently have a permanent that sits empty in the summer. Someone suggested to me today turfing it when it's not iced and making an indoor, you and I talked about a portable street. We have two hundred some odd kids who have just signed up for street hawking in this town. We have an obligation, I think this board, especially in the day of opiates, alcohol abuse, depression, mental illness, I think that if, and I mean everyone, bringing in the Adjustment Councils, the SROs, and let them all come into a room and say, okay, what is the issue, what is the need, long-term and then short-term, and let's move it forward, for the good of our kids, because the children are the future of this community in so many ways, housing, you know, where they live, education, but they're the future, and I think, and we just heard the Chief tonight, I think that, that's, I called it a tasker because I don't see us being in this long-term, I think we need to get this up, running and moving. And there are definitely people in this town now who have a strong interest in this, and I think we need to help them facilitate that. That's just my view of it, and having lived in the negative for a good part of my life and seen the worst that can happen to young kids, because when a young kid loses their life, it's, it's, I call it a robbery, you know, their parents aren't gonna see them married, they may never see them graduate from school, they're never gonna see grandchildren, all those things that often parents wish for. When a young child loses, or teenage loses their life, it's a serious thing. And I think that right now, there are so many good people in this community, coaches, teachers, that I think we need to bring them all in. And that's what I see us doing in this role, that's just my own thought, but I leave it to any other comment. Did I say too much? I just, there was, I had that on my mind all day, I had a long meeting this morning over this and I, I welcomed the thought and I echoed that in the meeting that I had, I'm like, we need to, we need to be the facilitator and the enabler here to get this off the ground. That's just my thought. Anyone?
So, so do we, do we wanna, so it, so it sounds like we've, we've, we've locked down on finance and policy and the others may be subject to discussion.
We can do that on June fifth, too, we can come back to this on June fifth.
Is that, is that kind of where we are?
Yeah, I think that's fair, sure, sure. We good, any further comment?
No, sir.
Everybody's digging off to their knees tonight. Okay. Number nine, an update on Pilot.
Sure, so I, I figured we'd kind of take a coordinated effort towards this, both myself and Selectman Zulus, having sat on the committee and the arduous work that was done by each of the five members. I, I will credit the two citizen members, Mike, Matt Keswick and Mike Zulus, at the time, for their hard work in, in coming up with a model and a, and a plan to execute. And Mike, you can pick this up when you want or I can continue on, but basically there was, there was evaluation taken on each of the three institutions in town. Both Mike Zulus and Matt Keswick were part of the negotiating team from that group, which went around to the three institutions and met with the senior executives there to talk about the plan. And the plan mirrors Boston's plan, which we believe to be well-thought-out, well-executed and, and well-followed-through-on by the institutions in our capital city. So a notice was mailed out to each of these three institutions based on the evaluation. The City of Boston model calls for a twelve-and-a-half percent tax on their commercial rate. These notices were sent to each of these institutions in late December with a notification that, you know, we would like to reach out to them and have them reach out to me as the designee. And each of them did, did that successfully within the timeframe that we asked, which was February first. We have been unsuccessful in reaching agreement with each of the three institutions, but received follow-up from each of the three. A very promising note from Curry College was the first one that we entered in, in July 12th, where they've acknowledged the letter. They admitted that they were in the middle of a, a current fiscal year and that they would certainly take a look at increasing what they already pay to the town, as they are the only one of the three that submit a monetary payment to the town, and further increasing that, taking a look at further increasing that in the, in the coming fiscal years. Had a follow-up meeting with BID Milton, very successful meeting with two of their board members not long ago. The dialogue is there, the Patriot Ledger ran an article the Saturday after the notices were mailed out. To that point, BID Milton welcomed this dialogue, thanked Mr. Zulus and Mr. Keswick for their actions leading up to it and continued and have followed through on, on what they said in the Patriot Ledger article of keeping, keeping the dialogue open. Subsequently, Milton Academy had reached out through an email and I sat down to meet with their representative and have also followed through on some further requests that they made. There were some questions about tax-exempt property and taxable property and stuff that they are currently taxed on, but it's, the negotiations, we are at the table with each of the three. And again, Mike, if you want anything else, we, we have not received any checks to this, to this date.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can add just a little bit of color in terms of the discussions that we had last fall. I mean, this, as Mike indicated, this is a policy that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen, I believe it was in sixteen, the spring of sixteen, when our group got together beginning of last summer, we went through a process of determining the amounts under the policy, determining what our negotiation posture would be under the policy and, and presenting that to the Board of Selectmen and then having been charged by the Board of Selectmen, we went out and had the discussions. And under the policy, it gives you some opportunity to phase in the amounts required, to negotiate the amounts that are, that are, that are in-kind benefits as opposed to cash benefits. And what we sought to do was to give the nonprofits every benefit possible, every credit possible, without going into necessarily the, the in-kind benefits, but coming up with kind of a win-win and, and saying, okay, we're gonna give you credit for everything, let's go through everything, and so everyone can see all the good that's being done. But recognizing that, that under the policy, there is a recognition that the town needs a cash component as well to reimburse for police and fire and DPW. And so we went through that effort, had some very good discussions, but at the end of the day, as Mike indicated, we didn't get to an agreement, and so our recommendation last November 13th was to send out requests for those amounts, for the, for the full amounts, because we didn't reach agreement on the phased-in amounts. The phased-in amounts resulted, you know, netted out to minuscule percentages of the net operating revenue, you know, point zero-five percent in one case, point, zero-point-one percent, zero-point-zero-five-one percent in one case, zero-point-one percent in another, another case. So, you know, in our view, we were trying to make something that could be very palatable for the nonprofits, and so hopefully, hopefully the discussions will continue, perhaps with the new committee, perhaps, perhaps with Mike, and hopefully we can get to a place where, where we can, we can get agreement under the policy.
I'm just gonna follow that a little bit, especially for Tony and Melinda, is that, and Katie has, Katie and I both, like Katie is friends that are on the Milton Board, I am a very good friend with President Quigley, I think the world of him. I think he's, what he did with that school from when I first came on this job, he, it's, he's the largest employer in this town, he's, he's always open to it, but from a needs perspective, if you just look at the numbers of responses, BID Milton, Quincy City Hospital closed, so you see those ambulances now coming. When the Chief talks about mental health issues, when he talks about substance abuse issues, those require numerous responses to the emergency room, and they're not five and ten-minute responses, sometimes they're for a whole day you might have, because finding a bed for a patient who's on a section twelve or pink page and there's no place to put them, you can't leave the ear, but they still have to be watched. Curry is an IT's, President Curry, it's a city within our community, it's a great asset, I would never wanna see it in our area, but it has its own share and as does Milton Academy, I mean, they're big, big parts of this community that draw considerably on our resources. And I've supported this from the time I got here, that I thought it was the way that we should go, I, I think it's very reasonable. I, I agree with Michael that I think every accommodation you could give, you've been giving, and I'm very hopeful that moving into the next fiscal year that we're able to make some progress with this, I really do, hope so.
I have a couple of questions, either directed towards Town Administrator Dennehy or Selectman Zulus, but when was the Pilot Committee put in place, when was it established?
Prior, prior to me, prior to me in December of sixteen.
Yeah, so I, so I think there were really two Pilot Committees, one, one was to develop the policy, and that was probably in fifteen. And then they, the, the policy was adopted in sixteen, I think the spring of sixteen. And then Matt Keswick and I joined the committee around May or June of last year, May or June. And our, our charge was really to implement, try to implement the policy, that was really our charge, that was already in place.
So I suppose the, the question that I have, and you might not be in a position to answer it because it really depends on the history of this, this committee, but have we as a town seen any measurable, identifiable progress year over year in terms of the cooperation of these three nonprofits? I understand that we're falling way short of what we set out to accomplish, like, no question about that, but are we seeing measurables where, for example, in 2015 we were at X and then in 2016 we got to X plus? And so on and so forth, like something that we can say, okay, we're moving closer to the middle here.
I think Curry's beyond the middle, I think.
I can qualify that, for me, it was an ultimate learning experience, so I, I tasked my department heads with getting back to me as to what, some of the things that are done in their departments or for their departments by these three institutions, and I learned very quickly what a great partner that Curry College and BID Milton were. And with, just with the, the giving, I, I think I said it to the BID Milton group a week or two ago, there's not a week that doesn't go by in the Milton Times where they're holding a check, giving someone something. So with respect to pen to paper and a check and a, and a negotiation or an agreement, I, I don't think you can talk about X plus Y, but I think just, for, for me, the learning process about what, what the in-kind and some of the donations that take place to a place like the Council on Aging or, you know, to the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition or Milton Foundation for Education, stuff like that, that I didn't know about. It was a learning experience for me. Having said that, we will draw upon that and still try to achieve the goal that we had set out to when, when these notices were mailed out from this board. had set out to when these notices were mailed out from this board.
Sure.
Tony, just further to that point, so Curry College has had a pilot agreement with the town since 2005, but the idea was that, you know, we're looking to update it and to really bring it current. The Wakefield Estate, which is also a nonprofit, also has a pilot, they make a regular pilot payment to the town, so aside from the three that have come up tonight and have been discussed, you know, that's another nonprofit in town that is making a pilot payment. I would like to bring up for the board's consideration, I think as we're going forward with these, you know, with follow-up to the letters and the discussions, and the town administrator and I did have a meeting with Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital a couple weeks ago, I think we need to think about, we were kind of putting them all into the same, into one basket, but there are different levels of service that the town provides to each of them. In some, there's a lot of services the town's providing, which I think Curry would fit into that basket, given the fire department trips up to Curry College to answer the different alarms. There's others, and I would put the hospital in this category, where there's not a significant amount, at least not as significant as the amount of services being provided to Curry that are being provided to the hospital, there's just not the same number of police and fire, other trips up. So, I think we've been treating them in the last year as being all kind of a one-size-fits-all, and I think we need to consider whether that should be revisited, and whether that's accurate, whether that's the right approach.
See, that's right, it's just my own knowledge, I think Milton, BID Milton is right there for police calls, especially in the, it's significant. I mean, you could bring the chief back again and pull it again, it's a lot.
We did talk with them about that, I mean, there's, you know, there's calls that, if there's an unruly person, or if there's a problem that the police are responding to, but the hospital does have security on site, and what came out of the discussion was they're not really calling for assistance for, you know, something that's not, some of the times that the police are coming up there are times where it's a criminal matter, it's a police investigation, or that sort of thing, which is what we've been told, and that they're not necessarily coming, that the trips that the police department is making up to the hospital are not necessarily, because the hospital's looking for assistance from the town, but there may be an investigation, or someone's been brought in from an accident scene, or something where the police are doing some further investigation. That's what we've been told by the hospital, we could certainly do more investigation on that.
Part of it, you're partly right, so here's one of the unique things that most people, and I think I told you this recently, most people don't understand this, so Milton Hospital, BID Milton is catching from Quincy, Canton, Randolph, Milton, thoughts of Dorchester, High Park. Now, if someone's in custody, like you said, for a criminal thing, then there'll be an escort from that agency, because they're a detainee, they're in custody. But the opioid, the mental health issue, the person who's just requires an inordinate amount of time from our police department, because we're the department, there's jurisdiction in the EIA, so when someone does act up or escapes or something like that, it's a lot. It's, the majority of my meetings in the last two years, over prolonged periods, like Curry might have something, but you clear out a, you could literally have an officer at that hospital for 20 hours, watching like a patient, and that happens more today, more than, you don't have to spend a lot of time in that EIA now, I was just there the other day, that's a busy place. So, but I'm willing, I'm with you, I mean, like, let's just keep the discussions going.
I think they totally follow that up, because they came back to us and said, the level of services that the town perhaps thinks are being provided may not actually be the case. So, that's why I want us to not, my view is, one member of the board is that, in the last few months, we've been treating them all as one-size-fits-all, and I think we may need to give that some further consideration.
And I, just to your point, I think that makes sense, I mean, if we all reflect on it a little bit, one is, you know, a college, it's higher education, one is a hospital, and one is an institution where it's a, you know, secondary school, it's a high school, it's a prep school. And we lump them in together as nonprofits, but they all have certain very specific objectives, and maybe we're wrong in lumping them all together as nonprofits. I just, and I don't dispute for a second that someone like Ken Quigley and Rich Fernandez, they have the best interests of strong, good, beneficial relationships with the town, and I witness that. I don't really know who the point person is at Milton Academy, I'm not sure.
Todd Plaine is the head pastor.
I'm sorry?
Todd Plaine, he's the head pastor.
I don't have individual relationships with anyone at Milton Academy, like I do at Curry and the hospital, I just, this has come up again and again from people that live here in town, that what progress are we making? And don't think for a second that the fact that I enthusiastically volunteered to be a part of this committee is lost on me. I realize that, you know, I could be, you know, I should be careful what I wish for, but it's just, it's an issue that keeps coming up, that's very, very, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, if I could just add that this discussion is the reason that this policy was put in place, and it's put in place in other municipalities as well, which is, if we try to grade on a scale, subjectively, which nonprofit is offering more, that takes you into a place that you don't want to go.
Sure.
And that's why the committee that established this policy and spent over a year, more than a year, it was a committee of three or four residents, spent over a year researching this and recommending this to the Board of Selectmen, and basing it in large part on Boston's policy, that's why they did it. And that's why they take an objective view, and say, based on our view of the services across town, and based on the research that we've done in other municipalities, including Boston, the estimate is that nonprofits should pay 25 percent, right, with credits, credits for in-kind, up to 12 and 1/2, up to half of it for in-kind. That's an estimate that will get you near where you need to be in terms of your nonprofit contribution. So, to have that discussion defeats the purpose of the policy, it would require a change of the policy, it would be somewhat unique, I think, and I think self-defeating in many respects. And I would say to you, Tony, in terms of the response to your question, Milton Academy pays a percentage of what's requested, based on the 2005 memorandum of understanding. Beth Israel Deaconess.
Milton Academy does?
I'm sorry, Curry College, my apologies, Curry College. Curry College pays a percentage based on the 2005 memorandum of understanding. Beth Israel Deaconess has not ever paid any cash component, and Milton Academy has never paid any cash component, and in our discussions, we gave them full credit. We took it off the table, we gave them full credit for their in-kind contributions. We just assumed that based on what they do, they should have the full credit for that, and it was only the question of the cash component, and we were unable to get any of that so far. So, to have a discussion of what they offer really defeats the purpose, I think, of the policy. It negates what we have done in the negotiations, which was to give them full credit for it anyway, took it off the table. So, you know, I'm happy to have the discussion, we can have the discussion about changing the policy, but it would be a radical departure from what the policy that is in place if we go down that road.
But I think, and I don't have the policy with me, but I think the policy is premised on the fact that the reason we're asking for pilot is because the town is providing some services to them, so I, and I thought that that's what, how we had started this conversation initially, was that it's kind of a reimbursement for services, so some of them have, you know, have given, responded with a different.
Opinion.
Well, I don't know if it's opinion, I mean, a different set of facts of what the level of services the town's providing actually is, and I think that's something that we need to be sure we have the right facts on, and that we're comfortable that what we think the level of service is being provided actually is, and that merits some further discussion, I think, with at least some of the institutions.
I agree. Just a follow-up to what both Katie and Michael said is, I've been, as a department head, at least twice before warrant committees in tough years, where the warrant committee brought up pilot, because the warrant committee would ask, like, you know, name your top five response places, and two of the three are in there all the time, they're in there all the time. So, in support of what you just said, there's a reason why we did this, why we, and we have friendships and things, and the give-backs and things, they're not all the same, but there was a reason why this policy was created, and I still today support it, I really do.
I don't think we should use the word friendships.
Oh, no, yeah, no, you might be right, yeah.
I just want to be careful about that.
Relationships, how about relationships?
I mean, we're a town where a lot of people know each other, but we're, you know, we have a fiduciary duty to the town, the institutions all have fiduciary duties to these constituencies that they serve, but we need to be sure we're, that we're all playing from the same playbook in terms of the facts.
I agree, and that's, I know, I take that back, I should have said relationships, but it is, it's a small town, but it's true, it's, the demands are the demands, and the calls are the calls, and the services are the services, they are what they are. Okay, I'm going to move, because we're going to be here. Are we good on this for now? All good? Move on. Okay, number 10, discussion approval, one-day liquor licenses for Milton Academy.
I'll move that we approve a request from Milton Academy for one-day liquor licenses for the following dates and locations, June 15th, 2018, Pritzker Science Center, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m., Stratus Library, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m., and Schwartz Student Center, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. June 16th, 2018, Head of School residents, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., Schwartz Student Center, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m., Stratus Library, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m., oh, the rest of these are 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. So, Elliott Commons, Cox Library, Pritzker Science Center, Wiggles Work Hall, Robert Salt's installed gymnasium, and the Kellner Performing Arts Center.
Second?
Second, yes.
Discussion? I do have one call, just following up on pilot. So, a resident who saw this today on the agenda called me today and said, all these liquor, granted, you know, the liquor licenses, they're paying a fee to get it now, but, you know, right away, they brought up pilot, is there any movement on pilot? So, it's, in the community, it's something that people pay attention to, and they realize the challenges that we have as a town government, making every dollar count, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, discussion approval, one-day liquor license, the Mary B. Wakefield Estate.
I'll move to approve two one-day liquor licenses for the Mary MB Wakefield Charitable Trust for the following events to be held at 1465 Brush Hill Road, Wine, Cheese, and Trees Tour on Wednesday, June 13th, 2018, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Dogwood Day's Garden Party on Saturday, June 16th, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 12, boards of committees, the Education Fund Committee.
I'll move to appoint Roxanne Musto of 101 Milton Street, Mary Gormley of 25 Guile Road, James McAuliffe of 525 Canton Avenue, Meredith Hall of 41 Russell Street, and Stephanie O'Keefe of 500 Randolph Avenue, to the Education Fund Committee to serve through May 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen, boards of committees, the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
I move to appoint Michael Blackwell of 357 Blue Hills Parkway, Leonardo Lee Toma of 58 Aberdeen Road, Eric Ask of 10 Stoddard Lane, Joseph Sloan of 55 Concord Avenue, and Vincent Urbansky of 22 Marilyn Road, to the Bicycle Advisory Committee to serve through May 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Fifteen, approval of a reserve, this is my first this year, reserve fund transfer request, sorry, I did, I have 14, I'm sorry. Boards of committees, appointment, Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Brian Furze of 630 Brush Hill Road as the Planning Board's representative to Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee to serve through April 2019.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one quick question, what's their mission, Katie? I'm just not aware of this committee, what do they do?
They've been around for a long time, they don't meet very frequently, if there's an issue that comes up, like Henry's was an issue with the way, anything in that business district, they tend to, either their opinions solicit, or they give their opinion.
Okay, all those in favor? Any further discussion? All those in favor? I apologize, I'm jumping, I keep seeing the red boxes, and I just fall on red boxes, and that one didn't have one. Okay, approval of a reserve fund transfer request for the Henry's demolition. Everybody at home paying attention?
I move to approve and forward to the warrant committee a reserve fund transfer request in the amount of $197,445 to cover the remaining costs associated with the demolition of the structure formerly known as the Henry's Building.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, could we have a, a.
Update?
Update and a description of the need and the reason for this reserve fund transfer, because I'm sure the warrant committee will ask for it.
Sure. I spoke with warrant committee chair, George Asher, today, and I will be attending their agenda, first on their agenda next Monday. I was going to be part of my town administrator's report, but perfect timing here. So, update on the, what is now a weekly update on the Henry's Building. The DEP paperwork regarding the asbestos abatement is still awaiting its signatory up from the Winchester office. Talked to Peter Seawood from DEP on Friday, there's still some issues he has to work through with the developer and his contractor, so that is in a holding pattern. Subsequently, heard from the Mass Bay Transit Authority, the diversion date that we set forth a couple of months ago was for Memorial Day weekend. In order to do that, the T has to mobilize some of their forces in order to get ready for that diversion. That process takes a week to two weeks. They have sent an email this morning to the developer and his contractor notifying them that if this paperwork is not in order by this coming Friday, that they will have to remove their assets and take them to a different location. So, I know we qualified before that the clock was ticking, and that there was still some time in the plan, I will qualify that again and reiterate that there is still time to get this project done. It will shorten the pre-demo period significantly, what was talked about to be a three-to-five-week period, as we sit here now, two weeks away from Memorial Day, is that the clock is ticking, so that pre-demo work will be shorter. This reserve fund transfer allows the remaining balance in that article to be removed and encumbered accordingly, so that if this project should happen, the demolition piece of this project should happen to spill into FY19, that money is set aside and can be put into the MBTA force account agreement with the $200,000 that this previous board had authorized, and the warrant committee had also authorized about a month ago. So, we will know more come Friday. Active dialogue between the contractor, his developer, and DEP to finalize that paperwork, but the clock has not struck midnight, so.
Okay.
So, the idea basically is we want to make sure that in the event that the demolition doesn't happen before June 30th, we have access to this money that's been allocated to the Henry's demolition.
Correct.
That's the balance of the 397, correct?
It is.
Right, because then it could go into free cash if we don't do this, right?
Right.
Which would require an entire process to get it back, and that, so, are you good? Are you good? I just want to comment on this, only because I was on the prior board, I know this, we no longer own this, you know, we've transferred this to the Conleys, but I know you're both, and Michael, lately it's been every day, you've been staying on top of this, and I know that a lot of residents are frustrated, we heard a couple of comments at town meeting. You know, this is a project that does involve some asbestos, hazardous waste, and we want to make sure that every I and every T is crossed before that contract goes in there. So, I know this has been big on your plate every day, and I thank you for the time that you've devoted to this, and hopefully we get this done sooner versus later. That's, I just want to mention that.
I appreciate that. On April 3rd, when we pushed that VMS board in and turned the message on, I did not think I would be sitting here on May 14th, still talking about turning the sign back on, so. Again, the clock has not struck midnight, and I know that the contractor and his, the developer and his contractor are actively working with both the DEP and MBTA to make sure that this building comes down as safely, environmentally efficiently, and quickly as possible.
I was on the call earlier this morning with the town administrator and town council, and then several with the warrant committee chair, and since they are, I don't know if it's definite that they've, have they posted it for Monday, or is that definite? He was talking about it, but I thought, he said he had to survey the members to whether they were going to have it, but I think some of us should at least be there at the warrant committee meeting on Monday. I have a master plan committee meeting that night, but I could show up a little late to that and go to the Henry's meeting, because there may be questions, there were a number of questions when Michael.
There were, there were a number of questions when Michael and Richard and I went to the last meeting and the Chair of the Warrant Committee did say that he expects there'll be a number of questions.
I agree, and I thought that as soon as you said you were going back. So, I definitely will go back with you if you want. And I think we just need to do anything to keep the momentum that we can control moving this forward. And so, whatever I can do, we'll be there, so. Okay.
Appreciate that.
What we thought was gonna be quick was not quick one. Okay, so, no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 16, discussion approval to authorize the town administrators the signatory for Comcast contract renewal request for proposals.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the town administrator to distribute the town's issuing report to Comcast of Milton and request a response thereto from Comcast of Milton, and further move that the town administrator be authorized to take any action thereto or necessary therefore.
Have a second. Have a second. Well, any discussion?
I have a question. We haven't seen the issuing report. I'm not exactly sure what the issuing report would be. Do you know what specifically is intended here?
So that, right, we're gonna, that's the meeting that, that we're gonna have Wednesday at 3 o'clock that I invited you to that you couldn't go to?
Which we're gonna make, yes.
Right, yeah.
And now that somebody, was it, was it Mike who was designated for?
I just invited Mike on my phone.
Mike was, Mike was on the Comcast.
You've been invited.
Yeah, I haven't had any meeting at the same time, but, so, so what exactly are we, what exactly are we authorizing to be distributed here? That's, that's my question. Because I have not been involved in that issue. David Burns was our representative on, on the Comcast.
Let's call him on the phone.
What, by authorizing the TA to distribute the town's issuing report to Comcast and request a response from Comcast, we did have the ascertainment hearing. We had some talk about whether we might need a second ascertainment hearing. What exactly are we issuing to Comcast?
So, I got on a phone call with Attorney Solomon today and asked that same question because there was some questions as to why, when the contract is to be renewed in October, that we need to send an RFP out. He talks about this as a formality, that that's part of the negotiation process with, with Comcast. You have the ascertainment hearing, you have informal negotiations, and then this, this issuing report is just a further step in that negotiating process with them. Where we'll sit down with their representative, Catherine Maloney, that was here at the ascertainment hearing. It's, he, he explained it as a formality in the process, that that doesn't bind either party to anything. It's just, you know, and, and Mr. Zulus had, had asked, "What if we don't meet that May 16th date?" You know, is the contract void, null and void, and it's not. It's, it's still the current working agreement and the current negotiation status. Nothing changes.
I mean, the reason I ask is that obviously we've got a broad via monitoring committee and we need to know where they're at and how their work may impact Comcast and vice versa.
So, so, so I, so I, I can fill in a little bit, because I, I too spoke with Attorney Solomon and have looked into the process a little bit. Apparently, there are two ways to go in terms of renewing your license. There is a 36-month formal process and an informal process. We are in the informal process because we only have six months until, until the, the contract, the contract is up. And the way Attorney Solomon describes issuing the RFP or the issuing report in the informal process is we are laying out our evidence. We are laying out basically what, what our needs are. And this is an all encompassing description of what our needs are and what our evidence is. And I asked him whether we would be precluded from amending or supplementing that if we came up with additional needs or additional evidence. And he, he said he didn't think we would be. He said that he thought Comcast would accept it if we had additional needs or additional evidence that were to come up. But, but as Mike described, he describes this as the, as the, as the kind of laying out of your position and your evidence at this point, and, and just part of the negotiating process. And then they'll respond to it and then there will be about a four-month negotiation from there. So, so that's what I understand from, from both this, the state and federal guidelines and then, and then also from speaking with him.
And so obviously the I-NET, which was the topic of most discussion at the, at the ascertainment hearing, that, that would be listed as one of the things that we're looking for?
Correct, yep. Possibility of high, high definition television for what people are watching this evening, stuff like that. He's, and that, that department head meeting that Chief King talked about, he did, literally did that. He, he was building a case around the room, a case of evidence what department heads use it for and what they'd like to use it for. That will be part of this issuing report to Comcast.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 17, discussion approval with a service agreement with Good Energy Incorporated. Now, it's noted here the town council's not yet had the opportunity to review this or approve this agreement. Do we want to defer this?
We do, yeah. Spoke to town council late this afternoon.
I'll make a motion to defer this. Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 18, excuse me, 18, bear with me, I'm getting, getting into this role. Discussion approval, regional bike sharing memorandum of understanding. Town council's not yet had an opportunity to review this, but I know Lee Tom was here. Do we want to defer this? Are we here? Did you intend to speak to this?
No.
You didn't?
I think just, just, just for, for this board being a new board, I disseminated the MOU for the regional bike program that MAPC had, had put forth. Town council will take a look at this and it will be on the agenda for May 29th if, if we want to talk about this, the, the program. I know, I thank Lee for being here, he doesn't have to be here, but basically there was a presentation by Mr. Mullin from Lime Bike and, and Lee Tomo from our Bicycle Advisory Committee talking about the regional bike share program. Lime Bike is one of the vendors that has, I believe it's 13 municipalities around greater Boston. They're looking to deploy some non-bike rack bike sharing for mode of transportation. I could have used one yesterday when I drove an adult bike down to Central Ave with two children's bikes, but, yeah, it's just basically if, if we wanna basically discuss this or we can, we can defer both the discussion and approval till May 29th. But just to bring this board up to speed as to the, all the hard work that the Bicycle Advisory Committee, Lee Tomer and that group have done to get it to this point. And then it's just if town council and this board agrees with that memorandum of, of understanding, coming up with a, a solution and a, and a mix for it in Milton.
Any other comment? Anyone? So, next meeting and we'll make a recommendation. I know it's bike season, Lee, we want to get them out there. I get that. Okay. So I'll make a motion to defer this until our May, next May meeting?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. 19, town administrators report.
Thank you Chairman Wells.
Yeah.
And members of this board. I give you the, the Henry's Building update. I did receive a, a very promising phone call today from the governor's office. I'd like to thank Jim Segroy, Rob Mallett, and Chief Grant. They successfully applied for, and will receive a $42,000 grant to expand, it's an IT grant, that the latest version of the governor's, Lieutenant Governor's Community Compact, a $42,000 grant for fire department records access to mobile devices. So first responders in the Milton Fire Department are able to access critical information in the field. There will be a press conference on Thursday at Fire Headquarters at 12:30, at which point we will sign the documentation. But again, just, just a great effort from the governor's office to reach out to the 351 municipalities in the Commonwealth. And again, thanks to our IT team and Chief Grant for writing such a successful grant application. So, look forward to Thursday, and look forward to the check and look forward to the IT coming to town. Recycle Cots from town meeting, Article 5, the capital requests, $400,000 was authorized. I know I've talked about this before, but it's 64 gallon littered wheeled. They're called TOTAs. Hillary Waite, our environmental coordinator, has actually sought a DEP grant which would push this distribution and delivery of cots out till October. I was just looking to, to get the impetus from this board and direction. So basically, we could roll forward with the $400,000 cart rollout at about $45 per cart in the second or third week in July, or we could defer that till November, first week November, second week November, should we receive the DEP grant, which would be about $25 a cart. They reduce the, the per cart price of $20. It makes sense to me economically. It's, I think it's a no-brainer, but I just wanted to present it to this board. Should we, should we roll them out in July at $45 a cart or, and, and again, it's not a guarantee that we're gonna get the DEP grant, but Hillary's working through the logistics with DEP as to how that grant would work, but it would, it would postpone the, the order and the delivery of cots.
I think anywhere, it's my own thought, I think anywhere where you can potentially save even if it's, especially for seniors, some of the seniors, save them even $20, $30, it just makes sense. It's just one little thing that, that helps. Anybody else?
I, I agree, especially because we don't really know the future of recycling. There's a lot going on in the industry. So, I, I would like to save people money.
Sure.
It's built into the capital budget, right? So the, it's really saving the town's costs.
Yeah, saving the town's costs.
Right, but any money we don't have to spend, we can use somewhere else, which hopefully will save people money down the line.
Yeah, I think we should wait and try to obtain the grant.
Yeah.
So if we, if we wait five months, there's a chance we could save about $225,000.
Correct, right.
There you go. It's a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer.
Excellent. The only other thing I have are Memorial Day related. The Flag In Day, hosted by Director of Veteran Services Kevin Cook, will take place at the Milton Cemetery this coming Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., where they put a flag on each of the gravestones. And then the Memorial Day Observance, that Barbara Martin from the Selectmen's Office and, and the Director of Veteran Services, along with the American Legion Post 114, have been working on diligently, will take place on Monday, May 28th, starting at Town Hall at 9:30. A procession up to Milton Cemetery where the services will continue up there around 10:00 a.m. So, May, May 19th is coming Saturday for Flag In Day and Memorial Day Observance, May 28th at 9:30. Thank you Chairman Wells.
Do you want to do the chair, you're bench chair after the tonight, Katie, do you want to, do you have?
No, you've got it. You're the chair.
Okay.
The chair's reported.
So, I don't really have a chair's report except for one thing, is we all know Friday was Barbara Martin's last day. And I know there was a lot of mixed emotion when she left. And even though she was here a much shorter time than I thought it was, because it seemed like she was here for 30 years, not four, three, it wasn't that long. It was a short period, three years. But Barbara truly cared about the issues that fell under her responsibility and especially Veteran Services, working with the veterans, the relationship she had with the seniors. And as I said to her on Friday, I wish her all the best. You know, when you leave someplace that you care about, if you've done a little bit to make it better, then you've accomplished a great day on life, so. And I know Katie, you especially worked very closely with her for a long time and I'm, I, on behalf of all of us, I want to wish her very well and, and tell her not to be too much of a stranger. And that's pretty much all I have for my report. Wait till next meeting. Members, I'll start with the seniority to my right. Anything, Katie?
I just want to build on what you said about Barbara and just to thank her for not only the work she did in the office and as well as the work on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, but also, you know, she is our licensing agent, was very involved in all the liquor licenses and all the Comcast negotiations, but also she played a significant role in our airplane noise efforts as, as, as a, she was appointed not as a resident, but she was appointed by the selectmen as kind of the person from Town Hall who was on that committee to help guide the committee and help that committee move in the right direction after we had had some, some, some issues with that committee. So, I think that was, she was very successful in doing that and helped bring a lot of professionalism to all that she did at Town Hall and to the Selectmen's Office. I know that was the thinking of the, three years ago, the board, when she came on, that, that, the background that she had, especially having been on the Warrant Committee and having been a cemetery trustee and having a lot of familiarity with town government, would be a big help to the, to the town administrator and to the selectmen. And she certainly fulfilled that role. So I too wish her well in her retirement and thank her for all of her efforts over the last three years.
Well said. Mr. Zulus?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll certainly...
I'm just going around the room.
Yeah, I'll certainly echo what's been said about Barbara. I, I, I had the good fortune of serving with Barbara on the Warrant Committee probably eight or nine years ago.
Don't date yourself here, just, just...
Before she was a cemetery trustee and certainly before she worked, worked for the town. And, and certainly from that experience, I know that she certainly gave a lot and, and has a lot to give. So, so, so I'll echo what both of you said about Barbara's contributions.
Brenda, anything?
Well...
No, it can be on anything, on any, I'm just, members reports on anything.
No, I, I know, but I, I also want to say I haven't known Barbara very long, but she was a welcoming presence for people who came in, whether you're a first time running for, for elected office or you're just curious about something that's going on in town. I, I really...
Ask her a licensing question. Those are the ones that she would definitely have the answer on.
Yes, but she would just greet everyone at, who came in at the desk and, with a warm smile and, and some ready information. And I really appreciate that.
Do you have anything else to want to talk? Anything else?
I do have a question about the IT grant. Who goes to that? I mean, will you be as our chair attending?
Thursday, you talking about the fire grant?
Yeah.
I will go to that Thursday, yeah.
Okay.
You can go though, any, I mean, as long as...
If there's gonna be a quorum, I'll...
There's gonna be a quorum, he'll post it, but we need to...
Post it by tomorrow 12:30.
As chair, I'll go to that, yes.
I'm, I have a conference on marijuana that day, so I just wanted to make sure that, that we were represented. Thank you.
I'll go. Tony, anything?
I have nothing yet, thank you.
Okay, citizen speak. Oh, go ahead, absolutely.
The only other thing I wanted to add, and I, I forgot, and I had some notes on this, is just, there's two things. One is we got a letter about the Eagle Scout Troop 5 Court of Honor on June 9th. I don't know if everyone received that or not.
I didn't get that.
It's found in my mailbox, so.
I didn't get my mailbox.
That's the day, unfortunately, that's the same day of the, the new selectmen training that the MMA is having. And, and I'm supposed to go to that too, now that I'm on the MMA board.
Yes.
But hopefully we can at least get a citation prepared. Emily Martin usually works on those. And then the second thing is just, I just wanted to, there's a lot of interesting things that come up at these MMA and Mass Selectmen's Association meetings, but one that I just want to let the board know about, there's, there's some pending legislation in the Senate and the House on these Airbnb's. And we have had some issues in Milton with Airbnb's and there's, so there's some competing legislation and there's different, there's a lot of differences in the two bills, but the MMA's following that pretty closely. And there was a discussion about that at, at the meeting last week. And it's, I think it's something we're gonna be hearing a lot more about in the next few weeks.
So, just to follow up on that is for the, for the new members, we had a criminal case, correct?
Correct.
Criminal complaint, started in special services, involved the police department, on a residence in town that was running, looks like a hotel on the west side of town. There was a, there was an action and order grant given by Quincy District Court. The order kept going, the homeowner continued to do it and there was secondary case, but I agree with, I had this written down for the, for, for the retreat is that, because Mayor Walsh is proposing a buy law for the city now and, and granted, we don't have it to their level, but I encourage each of you who have not, Google Airbnb's in Milton. You'd be shocked with how many, there's a lot. There are a lot. It's, it's a pretty significant thing. And I'm not suggesting, you know, overregulation, but we really don't have any reg, when we go into that from this case, and these cases pop up every few years. Prior to, Mr. Denny, Katie, you might remember this, up on Brush Hill Road, we had a case about five years ago, they were running it as a nightclub and they were bussing people into it. And when the police started to crack down, they were running special events. They had a Tyson fight, they, it was, and then they got in some illicit stuff as well. So, these issues do occur and I think it is something we're gonna have to address going forward because it is such a popular issue. You have a question, did you have a question there, Tony?
I didn't, no, I didn't, thank you. I was interested in some of those details. We can talk about that later.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else? No citizen speak respond, any future agenda items?
I have one. So Wednesday, I'm meeting with myself, Bill Clark and John Thompson, and are heading into Howard Stein Hudson's office to go over, Mastod has hired a landscape architect for the East Milton Deck project. So we're just gonna do a, a, just an overview of, meet the group. just an overview of, meet the group called Halvorson, H-A-L-V-O-R-S-O-N, a very renowned landscape architect firm, um, in Massachusetts, um, to go over a, a plan or some suggestions, and they're looking to come and speak to this board on May 29th.
Very good.
And I think we're also going to have to add, not necessarily the next meeting, but as we go into the summer, we're probably going to need a couple of agenda items on town meeting articles for the fall.
I agree.
Because the deadline would be coming up in August, just in the...
For October.
For the October town meeting. Um, maybe I'll put out a controversial idea. Uh, a lot of communities are getting into banning plastic bags for groceries, and, um, the MMA has talked a bit about that, and I know Boston, I think Boston...
Boston has already, has, has Cambridge, both have.
So, um, I think that's something we may want to think about, and Hillary Waite did do some research on that a few months ago, which maybe we should circulate that to the full, to the full board, make sure that everyone has it. It's just some research about what other communities have done. We may want to consider that if, not necessarily for October, but for some future town meeting.
It, it is something that has a lot of momentum in the Commonwealth, so I, I'm fine looking at that in October. I mean, Hillary's doing a great job anyway, so we've got to hear on staff, so let's...
I also think it, it plays into that, uh, catch base problem, too, with the storm water, so.
The plastic bags.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? I thank you all for your patience. I just, this is, at least for me, this is adieu, and, um, please don't be afraid to ask me, email me questions. I don't know the answers. As I say, this was not something on my bucket list, but I, in, over three decades that I've served this community, I, I just believe wholeheartedly in being responsive and fair and, um, answering questions whenever we can, and, and to always try to remember that people who live here really care about us, and that the human, and humanity really is a very strong thing in the people we serve. So, with that, emotional adjournment.
Thank you very much.
Good, let's go home. Good night.